Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, January 24, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Dr. David Bybee from Christ Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Closed Closet, Christine.
First of all, I want to thank everybody, thank the council, mayor, and all the city workers and managers. I was such a big crowd here, I almost brought my sermon, you know? I better not, though. But let's go ahead and pray. Let's pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, your majestic name fills the earth. Your glory is higher than the heavens. When I look at the night sky and see the work of your finger, it is awesome, as the psalmist wrote. Oh Lord, heavenly Father, may we be comforted and reminded of your guiding hand tonight. As we are made in your image, male, female, may we soberly, joyfully reflect your will and love, righteousness, compassion, in this city on a hill, Lake Havasu City. And as we experience the beauty of our city, lake, desert, friendship, may we also be a spiritual center that our people and churches may live, speak, proclaim the good news of Jesus Christ. Oh Lord, bless this council with your evident presence. In Jesus' majestic, wonderful, marvelous name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Welcome, Christine. Thank you so much for being here with the Closed Closet. If you'd share a little bit about your organization with us.
I want to thank you for having me as a guest to say the Pledge of Allegiance today. I also want to thank you for opening up the ARPA grant opportunity to the nonprofits and churches and social services that help our community. We have been giving out clothes to individuals, families since 2010, and it was back then we saw a need for more community resources. We are talking about people going through hardships because of a loss of a loved one, a woman leaving an abusive relationship, a bullied kid, terminal illness, someone making a bad decision in life and trying to make it right, or even a car breaking down and having to live paycheck to paycheck and decide, do I pay rent or utility or get the car fixed so I can get to work? This is what we see every day in the Closed Closet. We have realized that we are all one major illness or accident away from this happening to any one of us. The Closed Closet is truly a community project. The building was donated to us by a Lake Havasu City resident. As we started going through the building, we figured out it was in bad shape. We repaired the roof, the handicap ramp, replaced damaged doors, drywall repaired, patched completely and repainted, new water heater, new flooring, fire sprinklers were repaired and made functioning again. We replaced windows, wiring for security system, and put 17 cameras inside and out. And currently, right now, we are doing all the shelving in the Closed Closet room, and Home Depot is building them as we speak. Lambert Homes, Arizona, Number One Electric, Craig Flyer, Craig, excuse me, Craig Fire, VIP Plumbing, CRC Communications, Home Depot, Advantage Windshield and Glass, APL Servin, Rob with Selberg and Associates, Grover Painting, Campbell Ready Mix, APC Drywall are just some of the contractors that have donated so many hours of materials for the Havasu Hope Building. I apologize for the ones I've missed. Not only did the contractors help, so did our Lake Havasu community with things that we needed throughout the remodeling. We've had churches, civic organizations help with funds. The Elks and the Elkettes have been a big support with monetary and physical help during our care fairs. I am truly honored that all these companies and people and God trusted and had faith in what we are trying to accomplish. It's been a long road for me since the nonprofit was formed in 2014. I own a local business and work many hours and did this whole concept on a shoestring budget. It has been a big learning curve for me. Have I made mistakes? Yes. Have I seemed over the top scatterbrained? Yes. I am more of a boots-in-the-ground and helping people and not really good with the paperwork, so it's been a really long struggle for me getting all this done. With this being said, I'm here to share with not only the council, but the community, the need for the collaboration, the importance of working together and providing much-needed social services to our residents. I realize there are additional social needs that are under addressed in our community, food, housing, counseling, and just plain compassionate support. Through the process of connections between other nonprofits, churches, and social services, the Resource Center started taking shape. In a few short weeks, the doors of Havasu Hope will be opening. It will be a one-stop shop where people can be met where they're at and given a warm handoff to other organizations that can help people with their current situations. We are hoping that the city will recognize the importance of their collaboration and place at the table in making the Resource Center successful, working with our police department, first responders, and the new crisis team. We have been able to help more people and fill in the gaps where people are falling between the cracks. Havasu Hope, the Closed Closet, needs the support and assistance from the city in making this all possible. We are helping many people every day, an average of 70 to 100 people right now currently, as we are working out of storage units and the Salvation Army. And hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll be opening the Closed Closet part of the building, and then in two months after that, open the rest of the building. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Fantastic work. Great job. And thank you for all that you do for our community and those areas for citizens that really need help. And also a big thank you to Councilmember Lynn for your help and efforts in the Closed Closet as it's coming forward. So, all right, moving on to item four on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Cameron Moses, here. Jenny Koch, here. Jim Dolan, still here. Vice Mayor David Lane, here. Mayor Kalshighi, here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Call to the Public. This is where citizens have an opportunity to address the city council matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining. Red means that your three minutes is up. If you are here for one of the public hearing items, we do encourage you to wait until the public hearing item because we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, if you go to Call to the Public, we can only have a one-way conversation. We can listen intently to what you have to say, but we can't respond to that at all. So with that being said, we did have a few folks that signed up, so we'll go in the order of those that signed up and then anyone else that would have any interest in speaking. The first speaker would be Dawn Kirk.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Dawn Kirk, and I live in the foothills. My neighbors and I are here to express our concern over the Trinity project in Phase Three of the foothills. The current general plan and the zoning regulations limit the foothills to 697 units, meaning there are only about 95 units left for development in Trinity. But the developer wants to and is actually developing approximately 400 lots, including space for 45 RV townhome row houses. My husband and I, along with many of our neighbors, were enticed to purchase land and build our homes in the foothills based on the promise of large home sites, a school, fire station, a park, a town center, and a road for alternate access to the community. None of these things have come to fruition. Last spring, the Trinity developer started its massive grading project on nothing more than a mysterious at-risk grading permit. To be certain, these home sites do not conform with current zoning regulations, much less the general plan. We asked then, and we still ask today, who would spend millions of dollars grading hundreds of home sites without formal city approval or rezoning? It made no sense then, and it makes no sense today. The plot thickens. We recently discovered that the developer appears to have finished grading its hundreds of home sites and is now installing infrastructure. To add insult to injury, the developer is installing Lake Havasu City manhole covers. These are manhole covers that you buy from Home Depot or Lowe's. They obviously come from the city, which gives the appearance that the city has endorsed this project without going through the proper approval and public hearing process. This is not a good look for the city. I personally visited the city recently and asked for copies of all the permits associated with the Trinity parcel. However, I was told by the clerk that she could find no permits. No permits. If there's an at-risk permit, or any permit for that matter, why isn't it available to the public? Again, not a good look for the city. Unfortunately, I believe the city has given our community the impression that current zoning restrictions and the general plan are a farce. And to get around such pesky things like public hearing processes, a favored developer need only provide a wink and a nod to obtain a mysterious at-risk permit that is not available for public eyes and simply do as he pleases. This is patently not fair to the community, and again, not a good look for the city. I ask the city the following. What's being done to rein in this seemingly out-of-control developer? Did the city provide the manhole covers to the developer? And if so, why? Why is the city granting at-risk permits to grade outside the scope of existing zoning laws? And finally, before you consider approving hundreds more home sites in the foothills, I ask that you fully fulfill the city's obligations to the community. Build the fire station, build the park, create an alternate road in and out of the community, address current low water pressure issues, decrease emergency response times, and don't lower our property values by rubber stamping a plan to increase the population density in our community. I made it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so I hope those claps were because she made it in time. But we are in a public meeting, so we can't have all of the clapping stuff. So please follow the quorum. But thank you, Ms. Kirk, for your comments. I do encourage anyone that has questions about this to either reach out to us afterwards or reach out to a member of the staff, and we can answer those questions. The next speaker that signed up is Jeanette Sanchez. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Jeanette Sanchez. I live full-time in the Havasu Foothills Estates. I've been there five years. And I think it's good to note that I've been a homeowner in Lake Havasu City for 20 years. I love Lake Havasu, and I love our community. In my sleuthing work of looking at documentation of the Havasu Foothill community and pulling the original bylaws and just the master plan community, the city council many, many years ago, I believe almost 20 years ago, approved Havasu Foothill Estates community as a master plan. And the documentation as such, call it a master-planned community. We know that there are several phases that are going on in the foothills as we build, but it really is a fractured approach now. We don't have a master plan community. And each of the phases are now being governed by HOAs that are run by builders, developers, and investors. And I can speak from knowledge, as we in Phase One are beginning to transition and take over the HOA, we're dealing with a bunch of governance problems in taking that HOA over. And my big point is that there's no checks and balances between any of the phases. The city council and zoning are approving in a very fractured way instead of a very integrated way as what was intended and approved by the city council many, many years ago. You'll hear a whole host of problems and concerns for anybody who's coming forward to speak on behalf of Havasu Foothills Estates. And my ask of the city council, the zoning and planning commission, anybody who's involved in this, is that we have more transparency to what's going on in our phases, that there's a more holistic approach and review of the asks that are coming forward from our developers up in the Havasu Foothills Estates instead of just looking at a phase-by-phase approach, that the city council and others take a holistic approach to what this looks like, as it was originally intended, as a master plan community. And right now, it's very fractured. That's my ask of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Sandy Sprott.
Good evening. I would like to thank each one of you for being here. I think it's been a long day so far, from what I hear. You've had a long day. Well, I had the joy of moving out here the middle of July from Missouri, if you can catch my accent. So it was a wonderful experience, and I wanted to be here because our grandchildren are here. And I pick up the most wonderful six-year-old boy from school every day and get to take him to Dunkin' Donuts and places around and have fun with him. He's been a little troubled the last two weeks when some of the other children on the playground have told him he should be wearing a dress. Or he came up to us one night and he said, "Am I a boy or a girl?" And I just don't think children should need to be faced with this confusion. Thus, you might say that I am not only from the Bible Belt, but the buckle of the Bible Belt in my former area and finding out that drag queens are coming in to groom children. And it's not just everybody's children that go to school that don't believe with it, but it's the children that are involved in it that are also touched by their playmates on the playground. And so I have, if I get my glasses on, I might be able to read it. I have a suggestion. There are no adult bookstores within the city of Lake Havasu, and I praise God for that. There's an ordinance against it. I propose that we make an ordinance against drag queen shows coming in to groom little children that don't need to be confused about sex at age six or younger or a little bit older. And that is my concern. I would not ever move to California, but when our family moved to Lake Havasu, I said, "Yay, Arizona, here we go." So we moved out, and we really don't want Lake Havasu to become a California. And I hope that you will see my heart. And I've been in children's ministry since 1969, and I'm really concerned about children and them being troubled by things that they shouldn't have to be thinking about at a young age. I would like for you to maybe consider an ordinance, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Tammy Sprott. And if you could just state your name for the record.
My name is Tammy Sprott. And I'm a resident of Lake Havasu City. This child she's speaking about is my son. And I'm sorry, I speak quietly. Thank you for hearing me speak today. I'm here to object to the city allowing minors to attend a transsexual drag queen show being held next weekend. I am not objecting to homosexuality or the LGBTQ community as my gay friends and family support what I'm about to say. Speaking with the CEO of Go Lake Havasu, I learned that this group is funded by the city and residents' tax dollars. I have been informed, no tax dollars are to be directed towards this event. I understand there may seem to be a gray area because of discrimination laws, but again, this is not about homosexuality. This is about exposing minors to adult sex subject matter, just like the city doesn't promote swingers events or other illicit subjects, even if it's to the tune of children's music. Go Lake Havasu and Lake Havasu City Events has removed posts and comments of people in protest of this event. Why would you remove your constituents' opinions? We do not allow sexuality to hurt people. Grown-ups making consensual decisions is not... Grown-ups making consensual decisions is not the same as a pedophile engaging in their sexual preference, a heterosexual engaging in sex shows, or a rapist on the loose because that is what they enjoy. This hits very close to home because my six-year-old son came to me last week upset, asking if he was a girl. I told him, "Of course not," and asked why he thinks that. It turns out that some of the boys at his school are saying they are girls. Being that he is six, this obviously confused him. I talked with my son, as all parents should, on these matters. I asked him if he wanted to be a girl. He said no, and choking back tears, he was afraid that he had to be a girl. And he asked me if God made a mistake. This absolutely broke my heart. Someone, my someone, that is not old enough to be a sexual creature, has lost focus on being a child and is instead dealing with difficult and confusing adult subject matter. Yes, my son picked that information up at school, not at the event that the city has been promoting for six months, or for months, rather. But promotion of child abuse is perpetuating child abuse. Perpetuating and funding child abuse has culpability. City council opens with invocation, a prayer. I would like to leave you with this verse from Matthew 18:6. "If anyone causes one of these little ones, those who believe in me, to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and be drowned in the depths of the sea." This is to protect our children, and it's from the New Testament. "As Jesus' only commandment was to love one another, I love my LGBTQ family and friends. We simply want the LGBTQ to love the children as well. I am, on behalf of many Lake Havasu City residents, asking that you please put an 18-plus age restriction on this event. It's common sense. Do not be afraid. Thank you for your time."
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on Call to the Public? Yes, please. Just state your name for the record, please.
Hello, David Diaz. I'd like to talk about the Mojave Military Museum. We had a very successful first year in 2022, and we're going to be starting off 2023 with an exhibit over at the Arizona State University campus in celebration of the 10-year anniversary of ASU being in Lake Havasu. And we had a nice write-up in the newspaper yesterday about it. So it's free to the public for the whole month of February. And hopefully during the rest of this year, it'll be in other areas also of the city. Everything that we have that's donated and curated has been donated by veterans of Lake Havasu City. And it goes from World War I all the way through Korean War and Vietnam War. So please bring grandchildren, bring family members, open to the public, ASU, for the whole month of February. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I'm Mary Van Roy, and I'm here to make sure that everybody in the public knows that we're having the Delbert Days Weekend coming up with the rodeo. And it's really a Campbell family started 20 years ago. The Friends of the Fair keep it going with Dub, Delbert. And it's a great event for families, kids. And so many years, we've had this wonderful family event, and then people didn't know about it till after the fact. And they said, "Oh, I wished I'd known." So I'm hoping that everyone shares the rodeo and the Delbert Days Weekend coming up at Sarah Park this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And the gates open at 10 for the kids, the rodeo's at 1 o'clock.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing that, we'll close the Call to the Public. Our next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to remove item 6.4 for further conversation.
Okay. Are there any additional items to remove from the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lynn?
Whoops, I'm sorry. Can I please remove 6.2, please?
Item 6.2. All right, any additional items?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda, minus 6.2 and 6.4 as presented.
Mayor, can I do a correction to 6.5?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Koch?
Do I need to...
If you could amend the motion.
I amend my motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, minus item number 6.2 and 6.5.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to item 6.2, which is Adopt Resolution Number 23-3630, ratifying the submission of a grant application to Arizona State Parks and Trails for grant funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the downtown Calis project and to implement all activities required by the grant. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So yes, we submitted an application for a land-water conservation grant through Arizona Parks and Trails. This is a $1 million grant with a dollar-for-dollar match. We are able to use the $1 million from the ABC funds that have been set aside for this project as our match. That also includes the design portion of that as our match. The next steps in the process is the State Parks Advisory Committee will hear the items on February 8. The State Parks Advisory Board would then hear... Sorry, the State Parks Board would hear them on February 16, and then they would be submitted to the National Park Service for review in July with funding available in September.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Are there any questions for Mr. Keen on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to Adopt Resolution Number 23-3630, ratifying the submission of a grant application to Arizona State Parks and Trails for grant funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the downtown Calis project and authorize the city manager to execute all subsequent agreements, deliver all documents necessary to carry out the terms and intent of the grant, and take all steps necessary to implement and complete the activities funded and required by the grant, subject to necessary review and approval by the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Keen. All right, well, item 6.5 is approved trademark license agreement with the Lake Havasu Tourism Bureau, Inc., DBGO Lake Havasu for the use of the wordmark "Home of the London Bridge." Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Go Lake Havasu registered the woodmark "Home of the London Bridge" with United States Patent and Trademark Office. Lake Havasu City would like to use this licensed mark, "Home of the London Bridge," in the same way that it uses the current mark that we use in Play Like You Mean It. So we have a current trademark agreement with them. And so this would just be an additional trademark agreement or license that we would have with them to allow us to use that mark for non-commercial purposes related to government or municipal services such as business licenses, budget book covers, employee name badges, official flags, press releases, letterheads, and et cetera. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Are there any questions of Ms. Gary?
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
When this came across as a consent agenda, I was quite concerned. And the reason why I'm quite concerned is I went back to the trademark, which was originally dated October 21, 2014, by a gentleman by the name of James Combs. And this was for the "Home of the London Bridge." It says it is for the Lake Havasu City Economic Development Purposes. And I have a little history on this. I do a lot of trademarking and marketing for songwriters and other brands that I do. Never once will you see my name on it if I believe that if we are paying the Tourism Bureau X amount of money, they are hired by us, and it should be Lake Havasu City's property. It should not be theirs. I think it needs to be reversed that we should have ownership. I found out later, back in 2019, this "Home of the London Bridge" was abandoned and then was picked up again by the Lake Havasu Tourism Bureau, including Go Lake Havasu, in 2020. And most of the reasons why I don't put my name on anything that I have been hired to do for somebody is that's their personal property. It's their intellectual property. Why did we not get these two slogans in our name and give them the rights to use it?
Councilmember Cameron, I can't answer that question. It's not a discussion that I've had.
So do you get my point on the... I'm just a little concerned that they own these brands and we use them on a regular basis. And as we move forward, I'd maybe like to see for future contracts that we start to Lake Havasu City own their own intellectual property moving forward. That was my only statement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. To give you a little bit of background, it was actually Mr. Combs that reached out to me about this item. And so he did apply for a patent. He was not successful in getting that patent. It was already issued to Go Lake Havasu. So to protect the city, I asked Ms. Gary to go forward and enter into an agreement. So that's where some of the background came from. So we at least have some sort of connection to that mark going forward. And that's what this will do. But I don't disagree that we could have applied for it originally, but we just didn't.
But then it came up again in 2020. I would... But then it came up again in two thousand and twenty. How do you feel about that? Don't you believe that Lake Havasu City should start owning their own trademarks and their own intellectual property moving forward?
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, absolutely. And this is, this is one step to get that way, is to let's at least have a licensing agreement so that we have the mark. And then going forward, absolutely, I would agree with that.
But we are requesting the royalty free from them. And so they own it.
They do.
At any particular time, they do not have to release it to us.
With this agreement, they would. Yes.
They only let us use it for a royalty.
They license it to us.
Yes, for governmental purposes, for, I mean, all the purposes for which we currently use it or can foreseeably use it in the future.
But that contract could stop at any particular time if they chose to, after the jurisdiction, because this is based on timeframe.
Yeah, there are clauses within this agreement. But yeah, I agree in concept with where you're at. This is one step for us to get there, is let's start with at least having a licensing agreement so we have the mark and the ability to use the mark in a legal and lawful way.
Okay. I just wanted to make my, be on the record that I'm disturbed by that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question to.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I mean, we can't legally take it away from them. I guess that's my concern is, yeah, it's, I'm sorry they got to it before we did, but I mean, if we can't take it away, there's, I mean, we don't have it, they have it, we want to use it, they're letting us use it. I mean, if we had the opportunity to get it, I would definitely say so, but there's nothing, we can't like, take it away from them.
Councilmember Dolan, no, we're not, we're not challenging it. As far as the perspective right now, they're our partner. We partner with them for promoting business, recreation, and tourism for which they have filed for that mark. And so it's within the realm of which we work with them at this current time. If for some reason they ever go away or stop using that mark for the promotion of business, recreation, or tourism, then they can go through the process of abandonment of that mark as well. I don't know that it was something that the city was ever afraid of anybody else using. I don't know that we saw it as just the city's thing, like home of the London Bridge, although we use it. I think that the whole purpose was to try to protect it if somebody else was out there trying to use it, and then prevent the city or others from trying to use it.
Thank you.
And all I'm trying, Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. All I'm trying to say is an industry standards, that's not usually the way it goes. If you pay a marketing company to do marketing for you, you can see this trademark was brought, was taken into custody, if you want to call it, or ownership per se, in two thousand and twenty. And we have had several people on their board. These, this is very concerning to me. We could have absolutely owned that trademark. I don't, me personally, I don't really care for the play like you mean it, so they can have that one all they want. But on this one here, we have a lot of intellectual property that have already been marketed and placed on throughout the community. And just moving forward, I think that that Combs was doing it for all the right intention, and I don't think he was ever going to use that against us later. And I don't assume that Go Lake Havasu will, but it's just not proper in this industry, speaking from experience.
Councilmember Lynn, did you have a question?
I'm more of just a concern, right now, we're using this with the partnership with them. If they dissolve, I mean, we're spending a lot of money putting this on our merchants. Don't we have it on our, our entranceway? Like, I think that we need to, maybe in the future, like very new future, talk about what that looks like with them taking that brand. If we dissolve, we've spent all this money.
Yeah, no, so as Ms. Gary mentioned, we can challenge it if, if our interests were ever not aligned and, and, and go through that process to do it. They got to it before us. It's two thousand and twenty-three right now. They did it in two thousand and twenty, as Councilmember Campbell said. This is our way to ensure that we have used to use it and to help have an interest in it. But we've had home of the London Bridge on our entry marquee signs for eight years. We did that during the wayfinding process. It's been on there the entire time, and we haven't been in violation because it's on there. This gives us licensing rights per the agreement. Any additional comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the trademark license agreement with Go Lake Havasu for the use of the word mark home of the London Bridge.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item seven point one is announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. There are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, three alternate members. Anyone interested, interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven point two is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Mayor Shi, you attended the pastor and grace, is it Tatham's celebration on Sunday to congratulate them and thank them for their ministry for over fifty years at Stonebridge Christian Fellowship and their many contributions to the spiritual growth of Lake Havasu City. Mayor Shi, you served as the guest speaker at the Women's Council Realtors Event, and he gave a city update. And Mayor, you and Councilmember Dolan attended the Veterans Court graduation along with Congressman Paul Gosar, Penny Pugh, and Senator Borelli, who have been devoted supporters since the beginning. As a reminder, Lake Havasu City Courts has a total now of two hundred and thirty graduates that have gone through our Veterans Trip in Court since the inception several years ago. Special thanks to Judge Claly, his staff, the Veterans Resource Team, the Veteran Mentors, and our City Attorney's Office for your commitment to the success of these veterans programs and to our veterans here in Lake Havasu City. A quick update, as we close the construction or getting closer to the close of construction on the Picklepole Courts, it is in the final stages. As a reminder, this was a large donation that came from the public to help fund this project, and it's funded, and it's, excuse me, being built up in Dick Sam Park. We have some final grading and a little bit of touch-up work, and then in a couple weeks, these courts will be open to the public. The council and public will receive an invite to attend the opening ceremony as soon as all the details are ironed out. Republic Services reported back on the most recent Free Residential Household Hazardous Waste Day event we had back in December. Again, this was hosted at Fire Station One just off Kiowa Boulevard. You can see in this drone picture of the line of people that came up, is that College Street, I believe, that came up of College Street to turn into the back end of the station and then exit off of Kiowa. We had two hundred vehicles that, that came to that event in that a couple hours, and we had three point six five tons of hazardous waste that was collected as part of that event that is now ridged from our garages and properties and disposed of properly. As we get into the next year or so, we're probably looking at doing two events a year. Right now, we do one event in December each and every year. And then our, finally, our Lake Havasu City Police Cadets recently competed in the twenty-fifth Annual Chandler Tactical Competition. We had nine Lake Havasu City cadets that competed on January fourteenth and January fifteenth in various skills competitions, and proud to announce that our very own cadet Cora Mariani brought home first place in the female pistol shoot. The department currently sponsors and supervises one cadet post in Lake Havasu City. Our officers mentor the cadets and help them prepare for a career in law enforcement by developing fundamental understanding of police procedures, duties, and concepts. The department's cadets are young adults, both male and female, from ages fourteen to twenty. I'd like to congratulate the cadets, especially Cora, for, for her skill competition there. And a special thanks goes out to our cadet mentors. That's Officer McCabe, Officer Johnson, Officer Carroll, and Officer Flag. Thank you for your continued support for our cadets. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, well, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearing, starting with item eight point one, which is a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for Rotary Kitchen and Bar at one sixty-one Swanson Avenue, letter C. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Travis Francis has applied for a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for Rotary Kitchen and Bar located at one sixty-one Swanson Avenue, number C. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant was also invited to attend tonight to answer any questions from the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Seeing now this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I'd like Councilmember Moses to make a motion.
Councilmember Moses? Is that what, is that what you would like to do?
Sure. I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for Rotary Kitchen and Bar, one sixty-one Swanson Avenue, number C.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point two is adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash one, three, zero, zero, amending Lake Havasu City Code Section, Chapter Three, point two, zero, point zero, four, zero, schedule of fees and service charges to update costs recovered. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the adoption of the ordinance that followed the introduction that we brought to you two weeks ago at the last council meeting. Since that time, we have made the adjustments that council directed. Just as a quick recap, if for each year that we don't do a detailed cost analysis for each of the fees, we always apply a consumer price index factor to the costs or to the rates to determine, you know, what, what rate might be appropriate to help us keep pace with the economy, so that when we do the detailed analysis in another two to three years, we won't be so far behind the market, hopefully. So staff has gone through the process of increasing many of those fees by the thirteen point eight five percent, which was a CPI. The city's costs have been increasing tremendously. We did, however, leave many of the fees, mostly in the parks and recreation and transit areas, at their same level. We did not increase those. And the second schedule that we sent out to you today that was late, we didn't highlight them in the one that was attached to the staff report in the system. We went back and highlighted the ones, just as a reminder, of these are the ones that wouldn't, wouldn't change. So hopefully, that meets with council's approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. So just as a reminder to the council, what we're doing here is looking at all the fees that we charge for different services to citizens or users within the city. The process that Ms. Olson explained is, is a council process that we have asked the council to look at our fees every two years, but because of the condition of the economy, the staff took a look and said, you know, the inflation rate is nearly fourteen percent. Because of that, we're going to ask council if they want us to continue to wait and do it every two years, or does the council want to take a look at it? At that time, that was in the fall, the council did give direction to staff to bring back what that would look like with taking into account for the inflationary costs. In our council meeting two weeks ago, it was introduced, and then today would be consideration for final adoption. The changes are in front of us that we have, but these prices are, you know, I'm not in favor of increasing these. I voted no on both of them. I don't know that our budget currently, as is adopted, that we are operating within right now, already has the current fee structure built into that. And I don't know what changes from our action tonight till March first, when this goes into effect, that a business license now should instead of be a hundred dollars, it should be a hundred and fourteen dollars. We've already accounted for salaries in our current budget. We've already accounted for the expenses. And yes, we are seeing increased costs where we, we do need to have some cost recovery within those areas. And, you know, we, we could have looked at it from a development perspective, but back when we gave the direction this fall, we didn't go in that, that route. The ordinance that's in front of us is several services that are being added. So certainly, we would need to do that, such as the vacation rental application fee that is done by statute, based on the ordinance that we adopted, and it goes into effect on March first, credit card processing fees and the like. They're located on page one of the ordinance. So tonight, we're here to, to adopt them. If it is adopted, it's already been posted. There's a requirement to post it for sixty days, so these rates would go into effect in, on March first. So with that, I'll open up to any questions or comments from members of the council. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity, because you and I have disagreement on this, which is wonderful, right? Because we want to hear both sides of the equation. Yes, these fees do take into account our current budget, but we're in budget talks now, and we'll have a new budget starting here in less than six months, and so we're playing catch-up. We all know that the cost of doing business has gone up for everyone. If anybody, anybody here been to the grocery store in the last week, or to the gas station or wherever, and those fees, we're not immune to that either. Those fees go up. And we're talking about the fees, you know, like the mayor said, for a business license, or if you're having an RV garage built, and we have to have an inspector come out to your house, you know, four or five times. You know, the other taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for that. You should have to pay for that. And that's what these types of fees are that we're talking about. So I'm in agreement with this. Over the years, one of the things that I've learned, and I think all of us have learned from the citizens, is they don't like huge jumps. You know, there's been times over the years where we have not made increases, and we have not made increases, we have not made increases, and then three or four years down the road, we make a seventy-five percent increase. And people are like, wow, what's going on here? Why so much? It's because we didn't like, we didn't make those increases. We've learned that the citizens of the city prefer that we do it in small incremental steps. As the prices go up, we need to make those changes. So I'm for this. I just wanted to reiterate what I said at the last council meeting, and, and I thank the staff for going back, making the changes that we requested, and following through with, with our requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the council? Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I agree with most, most of what you said. How, how, I'm a huge proponent of just pay what you use kind of deal, and so I agree with David on that respect. I understand your point about how we, we put a process in place, and now we're going outside of that process, right? Where we ask staff to look at these fees every two years and then give, make the adjustments then. But we went through something pretty dramatic with, you know, COVID and all the inflation and all that stuff. So I think it was a smart idea to come back a year early so that we could make those small incremental steps that David responded to. My, my thought here is maybe we could so, because as it stands with them, we're supposed to come back and look at this next year as well. Is that correct? Is there any way that we could maybe reset that every two years to start this year? Since we're, we're looking at it now, we don't have to maybe necessarily come back next year?
Sure. No, I love where you're going with compromise, but I wouldn't trust that, because look where we're at. That was already the agreement, and here we are talking about fees again. So, but certainly, that could be a direction that we give to staff.
Yeah, that's something I would be comfortable with. But like I said, we've done a lot of things that we don't normally do, and I think this was a smart move so that we can keep that, that bump incremental instead of a huge increase.
Yeah, thank you. The last time we went through a detailed review was two thousand and twenty-two. So the current rates we have was when we actually went through, staff went through the assessment and said, how many minutes does it take this person to process that? How, how much does it cost for us to do this? How much is the piece of paper that prints out for, for that? How much does it cost for us to teach the babysitting class? All of those types of things, that was just done last year. And what this is doing is simply just applying a council policy, so it's our policy, staff is just doing what we've asked them, is applying CPI to that analysis that was just done in two thousand and twenty-two.
Mayor, question?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
If we're supposed to do, do this every two years, I'm trying to recall back, why are, why is this in front of us now? How did this become here today?
Yes, the staff wasn't, and maybe Ms. Olson, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity, but staff was going through their analysis and realized the impact, what, what's happening from an economy standpoint, and CPI is at fourteen percent. They thought, well, fourteen percent's big, and so we should maybe touch base with council and see where they're at on this. They did that, and at that time, we had this discussion. I made my points that I have made now in this third hearing of this process, and, but we gave staff direction at that point to bring it to us. Let's just see what it looks like. Was kind of the feel I got from it. I don't want to put words in any of my colleague's mouth, but that was kind of the feel I got from it. And then it came before us, and two weeks ago, and we passed it. So, yeah, so hopefully that gives you some background for it. And Ms. Olson, did I miss any of the pieces?
No, that was exactly right. Thank you.
Perfect.
Mayor, thank you for that. I appreciate the update. I'm like, why are we here again? And what I do know, moving forward, like Councilmember Moses just stated, we are going this way again. We really don't know. But one thing I do know, I don't believe any of my salaries are going to go down, and I really don't believe any of my insurance and my businesses are going to go down. And I'd certainly hope that the fuel prices would go down, but what I don't want to see is our services be reduced, or if we continue. I know for a fact that even our permits for residential are extremely low in this last couple of months. So funding is going down for the city. I don't want to take away from our services. And if I could ask city manager, Jess, you have been saying that there has been a lot of things we put in budget that we are going over budget on based on overall costs. I mean, fuel costs, a lot of items that we thought were going to be within our last year's budget are higher than we expected.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell? In terms of over budget is a big phrase for us, but in terms of the cost that it takes for the city to provide the services that we provide, that has been off the charts, right? So Council, Vice Mayor Lane has talked about that in terms of just the goods we see as individuals and consumers in the public. But we've had a cost of big projects that have increased, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent, over and above what we had estimated it to be prior to this swing and change of economy. It's a weird one for supply chain and certain things that we, that delay projects to the increase of resources and so forth that are out there. It's been having a big impact. We looked at the airflow project, or the HVAC or airflow project over at the Aquatic Center. We estimated that prior to COVID and all the economics that took place nationally or otherwise. We estimated that project to be about two point two million, I think it was. We came back to council and said we got the bids, and it's something that we needed to do. But that's a project that now costs, if we want to continue, is three point one million dollars. And then, so we took a close look at it, made the proper approvals, so it was handled within budget. But obviously, the cost of that project far exceeded our expectations prior to, just a few years ago.
Mayor, final statement on that would be, my big concern is, I know how much the air conditioning system cost at the Aquatic Center. I walk through some of the parks, and I'm seeing some things that disappoint. They need maintenance. We also had a lack of employee issue through COVID. I don't want to see Lake Havasu City decline because of a permit fee or other fee going up fourteen percent. I think the citizens are aware of that, especially when we're getting hit with twenty-five percent or more, and doing everything in our power just to get employees to mow this grass. I see, Mayor, you have removed the fees for the parks, and I believe that your direction on that was correct. I am concerned that we're going to be hitting them harder, because I personally know that the after-school programs were sold out within like six minutes in some of the places. We have a lot of children sitting at home, because there's no place for them to go. And I know that there's fuel, food involved in there. I just want Lake Havasu City services to stay top-notch, and if not better. And I'm kind of concerned we're going into another dip in the economy. And these are services like having a dog, to go get a dog tag on. That's a luxury. That's not, you know, that's, having an animal is a luxury to me. I know that people use them for comfort and companionship, but, and I love my animals, but I'm just using that as an example. As we move forward in the supply to go up on a permit for a house, maybe fourteen or thirteen percent, I'm building homes, and I know for a fact they're going up way more than that. So I'm not trying to give it to hit the citizens by raising these fees, and I was originally thinking all the fees should go up per the direction of the staff, but I'm going to compromise here.
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify, so most, all of the Parks and Rec programs, after-school programs, are not under this proposal being increased, and the transit costs, so citizens that use transit under this current proposal would not see any increase either. Is there any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. We do have one citizen that signed up to speak on this item, Dante Marinelli.
Good evening, Council. Dante Marinelli, I own a business at the airport, and I'm one of the major stakeholders there that operates. You know, I honestly, I got emailed these fees today, so I didn't have a chance to really go through them in depth, but what I can tell you is that we are concerned about just a blanket raise. We have a specific process as an airport and a duty to make sure that we are covering our costs, I mean, for our FAA grant assurances. I mean, this is not just something like, I mean, I know we talked a lot about permits and parks and things like that, but there's a lot of money that comes in from the federal and state government to help with offsetting costs. So the actual cost that we actually derive and need for the airport, I mean, not all of that comes directly from the city coffers through these fees. That being said, there are several fees in here that we just took a major, and look, at the end of the day, I understand that anytime you talk about raising fees, there are always going to be people in line that say, no, 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 no. I don't, you know, no matter what, I don't, if it makes sense, I just don't care, I just don't want to pay anymore. That's not really what I feel. I actually feel that there are some fees in here that could actually probably have gotten more. But the fact is, we have a process, we have an airport advisory board, we have all these mechanisms in place to actually look at these fees, adjust these appropriately. We have consultants that give us all sorts of data, but the point is, we didn't do any of that. We just blanketly raised stuff out of hand with CPI. That being said, fuel flowage, which is one of the major fees that concerns the airport, and that every person that uses fuel at the airport pays a fuel flowage fee to the city, that was at nine cents two years ago. It was raised to twelve cents, or a thirty percent increase over one year, and that was the last rates and fees. So we took literally over one hit, we went from nine cents to twelve cents. And then, we're now going from twelve cents to fourteen cents, which again is a seventeen percent, because you can't do a half cent. I get that. They went one, and they went to two. But the point is, is over two years now, we're looking at a thirty and then a seventeen percent increase in fuel flowage fees. That's considerable, considering one of the major contributors to our fuel flowage fees each year is our US military. The fact is, is that half the gallons that go out of our airport is charged right back to our military. That's, you know, about eight hundred thousand gallons of the one point five, one point six million gallons that is pumped is billed right to the direct, to the US military. And we can't adjust those fees at the drop of a hat. It's part of a contract, a four-year contract. So getting that adjustment was quite a big step for us, for the nine cents to the twelve cents. And actually, it was, it was an issue where we weren't even notified in a proper form, so we had to go backwards and try and get that contract amended. But the point is, is that, look, at the end of the day, we have a process to really look at these fees, look at this stuff in depth. We're just blanketly just kind of saying, well, and we're behind. We're behind on some fees, we're ahead on others, and this is just, it's just not a good way. And the fact is, is the biggest, the biggest hit, the biggest fee here that's on the schedule is this fuel flowage. And, you know, we're timesing, I mean, I get it's one cent, but we're timesing it by, you know, a million, two million gallons, and all of a sudden, it's a big deal. What it really looks at, though, is that, again, we have to stay competitive as an airport in order to make sure we sell fuel, because people can fly from airport to airport to airport to go get their fuel. And so the fact is, is that they're saying, I'm sure you're saying, well, I don't understand, it's basically a tax, why not just pass it along to the consumer and just move on? And that only lasts so long. I mean, the fact is, is that Kingman's rate, I just called the airport manager up there and talked to him today, they're at five cents. So if we're at fourteen cents and they're at five cents, for that same gallon of gas, I have to charge nine cents more. Well, we have a self-serve tank and, you know, on our field here, where people can just go move their airplane over and fill up their tank, you know, basically for a discount, instead of having someone pump that in, right? So in other words, if I pull up a truck, I'm going, you're going to pay more for that. Well, guess how much difference that is? That's five cents. Someone is willing to actually do that work themselves, move their airplane over for five cents. I'm now nine cents different than Kingman. You know, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, look, within reason, I get it, it's all big numbers, and I really do think that in that we kind of lump things in, and we just say, look, it's a big budget, and we all got to just do our part. But the fact is, is that I would really like to see how far in the negative Havasu Airport really is with the fee structures that we have in place, and say, well, how much do we have to make up? Because every single time we raise these fees, which I agree with, I'm not saying that I don't want to raise fees. What I'm saying is, is where's the mark? Are we fifty thousand dollars in debt? Are we a hundred thousand dollars in debt? Where's the red? And where do we need to get to the black? And then let's talk about it as an airport, and how do we do that? What's the best way? Do we hit the users all across with a fuel flowage fee? Do we actually hit the hangers? Do we hit more ramp fees? How do we do this to make sure that we close the gap? So my time is up, and if you have any questions, but I don't think you do.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, do you have a question for Jill? Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, can you explain that? Because now that he, I didn't realize the importance of that until I, I know that a lot of us drive all over the place to try and find gasoline at a few cents here or there. Can you explain what he was talking about, or where you got that number? Or was it just a flat fourteen percent across?
We did apply CPI, but it was sent out to each of the departments. I don't really want to speak for the airport division, but my understanding was that the fees would be considered by the person in charge of the airport. And he did recommend that the fees go to the rate that were reflected in the CPI. Now, I don't know, I can't really address the Kingman issue. I don't always just assume that because, yes, their price is lower, but does that make it right? I don't know. I don't know what their true cost is. If it's five cents, then maybe we need to look at that. But this came from the airport as a recommendation.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
I guess I have a question. Yeah, I am concerned, because I'm a, and I'll bring this up in another agenda item we're talking about, is I like to be data-driven, and I do get, you know, what you said, but definitely what Vice Mary Lane says, is we do need to stay ahead of it. Costs are up. What my concern is, is if we do just do a blanket approach all the way across the board, is concerning. I just did the fuel flow, and it looks like it's a thirteen point eight five. So it looks like it was basically just changed based on the CPI. I guess my concern is, is maybe we didn't have a big enough process in this to make these changes. Like I said, but I guess I'm a little bit reassured, and I guess maybe you can explain about the 2022. We did go everything, do everything the last year with a fine-tooth comb, what everything cost. So everything as of last year was dialed in to what costs were and what we, what we thought they should be with our detailed analysis.
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know, like I said, it's hard just to say that, well, let's just take this off because somebody came and brought it to our attention. You know, of course, I'm concerned. What else did we miss that we just blanketly did at thirteen point eight five? I don't know. I guess that's my concern, is being data-driven, it was, you know, to be able to not ask Damon here, well, why did we change it to that amount? What was the justification for it? If it was, but if it's just the CPI. So I guess that's just my concern.
Yeah, no, it just is CPI. I want to make sure we're all correct there. No one said, oh, no, it should be now twelve cents. It's, or fourteen cents. It literally is CPI. It's an Excel spreadsheet, take CPI, multiply times the current rate to what the new rate is, and there will be other. I mean, we heard testimony from one, one business or one person that's going to be impacted, but there's other, I mean, these are every fee that somebody pays for anytime they do services with, like Havasu City. So I was supportive last year of the process. We went through, we did an analysis, this is what it costs to deliver those services. We went through the process, and we did that. But I too have concerns with just a blanket approach going forward, so.
Mayor?
Ms. Olson?
If I may?
Please.
As the mayor stated, it is a blanket application, and that's just part of this methodology. It's a common methodology that's used not only for fees and services, but often it's used for wages. If we, if we don't want to do a detailed compensation study every year, but we want to keep up with the market, it's common methodology, methodology to apply CPI on an annual basis until you again do that detailed analysis. So if council wants to do it differently, we can take a look at that, but it's a common methodology. It does, it doesn't reflect exactly what each cost is, but it does apply that blanket approach. And then every year of the year, we take another close look at to see how close we are.
Okay. We don't have a, do we have a calculation to see what this increase would be over the next three months, or what it would be over the next year, based on these increases? Or would?
We might have that. I'm not aware of that, but we could have that down at the detail level.
All right. Any additional discussion, or otherwise I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mary Lane?
Yeah, I'll make one more comment, if I may.
Please.
We are a nonprofit organization. None of the fees that we're charging are so that we're putting money in the bank. You know, we're not, we're not trying to make any money, we're trying to break even at the end of the year. This year is not a, an in-depth cost analysis like we did last year. Next year will be an in-depth cost analysis. Could the fees go up again next year? Yes. Could they stay the same as what they are now? Yes. We don't know that answer. What we do know is that it's costing us a lot more money right now to do business. We had a budget, we are meeting those goals right now, but as Councilmember Campbell said, we don't want to cut services. And as I said earlier, these people that are using these services are the ones that should be paying for it. The rest of the taxpayers should not be paying for it. We haven't raised taxes. Nobody up here on the, on this city council has ever voted a tax increase. In fact, if you looked at your property tax bills this year, your property taxes went down. We are reducing taxes. We don't want to raise taxes. We're not going to. But what we are doing is raising the fees so that the people that are using those services are the ones that are paying for it. So I still believe that this is the way we should go, but that's my opinion. And I'm willing to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number two-three dash one-three zero zero, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Section three point two zero, point zero four zero.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mary Lane, and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item. Item eight point three is adopt ordinance number two-three dash one-three zero three, declaring the document entitled, 2023 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter seven point two zero, Water Conservation, January twenty-four, 2023, a public record, and amending, and amending Chapter seven point two zero, water conservation by adopting by reference multiple text amendments to revise water conservation regulations and penalties. Mr. Kozlowski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to adopt the changes to water conservation ordinance. At our previous council meeting, this item was introduced and based off direction from the city council. A number of edits were requested. Those edits include, one, add reference to automatic shut-off nozzles to tier one; two, remove reference to use of water to wash vehicles and commercial car washes from tier three; and three, add reference to use of effluent is strongly encouraged in tier three for construction and pest control purposes. And with that, along with this ordinance, there will be a lot of public outreach. A lot of items are currently on our website to address with particular plants that you can plant to reduce your use of water. We'll continue to reach out to the public and notify them of different ways that they can continue to conserve water based off of the different techniques they've been doing so well and implementing over the years. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. Do any members of the council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I know that we talked about this at the last meeting, but can you explain to us again how we're actually going to monitor some of these things? I know that we had talked a little bit about the neighbor telling on the other neighbor or something, but I'm just looking at, just for example, restaurants refraining from serving water unless requested by the customer. So if somebody comes in, and then they come and tell the city this restaurant is serving So if somebody comes in and then they come and tell the city, this restaurant is serving water without asking the customer, and then they're going to get a first violation? Is that how that works?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, this will be very reactive based off of code enforcement. So that's how a lot of these will be notified to the city based off of that process.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I guess question statement. Boy, is this up in a hot topic. And I want to wheel it back a little bit because there's a lot of confusion out there. And first and foremost, everybody asks, oh, my gosh, we're in a water shortage. That's it. Not true. And I'm going to tell you why. This is the knowledge I've got. And trust me, everybody I've talked to, I've gotten different knowledge. I've went all the way up to the state legislators to ask those questions as well. Seriously, what tier are we in? Do you want to know what they told me? Well, the guy that was taking care of data has been fired because we weren't getting proper data. So now we have to hire somebody else. You guys didn't tell me this. I found this out myself. This is what I was told. I know you guys are looking the same way I did. What? So basically, the data that we have been getting is not accurate. What I do know is we pay for 28,000 acre feet for Lake Havasu City. It's an allocation. I know that for a fact. What the future may look like, I don't know. What I do know from the data that I just got for a Mojave County meeting I'm going to on Thursday, said the population of Lake Havasu City is 60,777. That's what I was just told. What I do know is that we're at about 13,000 acre feet is what we're using. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah.
14, okay. Give or take a little bit. I don't want to get in trouble.
Before I agree until.
But for, I just, the only reason why I put in this on public is I'm getting all these emails, moratorium, stop everything. What are you guys doing? If I can't wash my car outside, why are you building houses? I'm going to put an X and A to it. It's the information that I've been digging up. And trust me, it's all over the place. If any of you think you can get the accurate information, congratulations. But anyhow, so we have about 14,000 acre feet that we're using. And we're at 60,000 people. Remember the old saying that we're going to get to 90,000? Who knows that? All I know is about acre feet. So we have 28,000 acre feet that we are paying for. Somewhere along the line, when the data gets, data gets straightened out, they might tell us we might have to reduce our allocation level. So what I'm saying is, I think Councilmember Moses mentioned it before. We're creating a problem when we don't even have a problem. And what I do believe is I don't want neighbors telling on neighbors. What I do know, because I'm a business person, so I do know this, that if you want to water conserve, you should now. Because Havasu is growing faster than the data from two years ago. And we're at 60,777 according to the recent data. So that means as we grow out, I'm a property owner, you're a property owner, anybody that owns property in Lake Havasu City, they brought in, they bought in the city limits because it had water services. We don't go around and say, sorry, you can't build that now. We, as a city, are responsible to make sure when you want to build that you're going to have adequate water for you. But it's reckless to just say, build as many pools as you want, just floodwater everywhere, busted bubblers, we don't care. Put grass wherever you want. We can't tell you not to, but we can ask you to participate. And that's what I hope to do. Because this, this water conservation bothers me a lot. It starts right here in Tier 1 shortage. We recommend you take a shorter shower. When you get to the end of it, it says if you, we, if you, in Tier 1, we can actually fine you for not taking a shorter shower. So I guess my husband's going to be calling in and making sure. So again, I'm not happy with this document. I think it needs to be thrown in the trash. I personally think we need to work on our water rate study. That's going to be something we're going to have to tackle over the next three months. And we've talked about conservation and other things there. We need to tackle that. And the only way I know how to get everybody super aware of their water conscious ability, I guess that's not even a word, but anyhow, I'm drawing here, is when we get our water rate study done, and let's just say you get a bill and the federal government comes in and says, without a doubt, we're in Tier 2, 25% of your water bill, right off the top. It's going to force you, change the bubbler, get rid of your grass, go find yourself low water use plants. You're going to participate with us. If it gets to Level 3, Tier 3, let's just say it's 50% across, right, right at the bottom of your rate. Sorry, this is what the federal government says. We're doing it to you. Maybe then you will be getting RO systems for your water pool cleaning. I would like to talk to Greg Frostley. Should we be dumping a bunch of pools down in our sewer system? We know we need an injection well. So I think really personally, we're getting the court, the cart in front of the horse. And I just don't think we're ready for this document right now. I think we need a lot of education. I think we need the water rate study. And there's my soapbox comment. But this will be a heck no for me until we get some real proper data down through.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. So to clarify, we are in a Tier 2A shortage. So the Bureau of Reclamation has already identified that. That's based on Lake Mead levels each August. That's when, when that's declared. So we know that. What this does is we have a water conservation plan last updated by the council in 2020. The part of that is water conservation. As an element of that, Lake Havasu City and our citizens have a great track record of conserving water. We've, we've done a fantastic job over all of the years through not only residents' behavior, also based on infrastructure that we've all invested in and technologies that we've invested in. So we've done a really fantastic job that way. What this is doing is based on the tier system that the federal government has set up through the Department of Interior and Bureau of Reclamation, is just giving certainty at each tier level. So Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, in what that might look like. Now, some of these are really common sense and basic things if they are common to you. So things as when you're brushing your teeth, turn off, off the water faucet. Seems pretty basic unless you don't do that now and you never really give it much thought because water's just always been there when you, you turned on the faucet. The, the law of the river is very, very complicated. There are seven basin states and there's a treaty with Mexico, a federal treaty. So it's very complicated on what we're doing. We're looking just to do our part. And I do agree with Councilmember Campbell that this is just one half of the equation. The other half is based on rates. And, you know, large water users would, would pay for, for the water that they use at a different rate, which would encourage conservation. We know that works because we probably previously had the winter quarterly averaging, where you took out of a four-month period over the winter, you took the average of three of the four months, the three lowest of the four months, and that would be your base charge. A calculation would go through for your base charge. Sounds really complicated. If, if you weren't here during those times and you're listening to me say, like, wait, what did he just say? Yeah, it was complicated, but it did drive conservation for, for our citizens. At our last council meeting, we awarded a contract to Will Dan Financial, who is going to be taking a look at our water study. And it's a two-pronged approach. One is a 10-year outlook for infrastructure. So what do we have to make sure that we have from an infrastructure perspective to ensure that it, we do have water and water delivery systems, but also a five-year outlook of what it would take for, for water and water rates? Part of that direction that we gave was we would like to see a focus on conservation. And so we'll have those conversations in the coming month or two as that process is underway, and that'll be a part of this. So this really is education-based. If, to Councilmember Lynn's point, if somebody reports a restaurant serving water, it'll be an educational touch of what, what this is and what we can do as a community to do our part. And when I say community, I'm not talking just like Havasu City. I'm talking the seven basin state users, the 40 million people that rely on this. So this is just bringing certainty to the plan we already have adopted of, of what would occur, what are some best practices based on the tier system set out by, by the federal government? Any other, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. I think tonight's my night to disagree with people. So to council, because I disagree with Councilmember Campbell. To me, this is, this is an emergency action plan. This is an emergency action plan, just like if you need to evacuate a building in case of an emergency or a fire. This is a document that says, if this happens, this is what we were going to do and what we need the community to help us with. If we get to this point, this is what we need to do and we need the community to help us with. If we get to this point, then this is what we need to do. That's what this document is. It's an action plan should there be an issue. Right now, we're in, as the mayor said, Tier 2. Do we wait till we get to Tier 3 and say, oh, my gosh, now what do we do? We need to put something together for Tier 3. This already puts it out there. If we get to the point where we have a wet water shortage, where they actually tell us you don't get as much water, it's in this plan. That's what this plan is for. It's not just a document saying that we're going to fine people for this or that. It's a plan of moving forward should a drought happen. We're in a drought. We don't know what's going to happen the rest of this year. We don't know what's going to happen next year. We don't know what's going to happen the year after that. But this plan is there, so no matter what happens, we're prepared for it ahead of time. It's just an action plan should that happen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mary Lane. And I had a citizen tell me, you know, we talk in some of these acronyms like wet water shortage. Like, what, what does that mean? So as Councilmember Campbell mentioned, we, we do get 14,000 acre feet of water currently a year. That's what we use. That's the, the use that our citizens and our businesses need in, in a year to have for water. So if the Bureau of Reclamation were to say, you know, Lake Havasu City, you do use 14,000 acre feet of water, but this year we're only going to send you 12,000 acre feet of water. So there's a 2,000 acre feet of water deficit. What would we do in that case? Now, there's, they have not ever done that, but they could. And that's what we're planning for to Vice Mayor Lane's account is, is just give certainty, bring education, bring awareness to, to the fact of, of water conservation and what we can all do to conserve it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I, I agree for most part. I definitely think we need this. We need, we need something on the books to encourage people for education. One thing I don't like is it's not data-driven. We don't, we're talking about, we could go from 14,000 to 12,000, but we don't know that number. But doing these, doing the stages in Tier 1, 2, 3, or even the wet shortage, how much are we going to save? Like I said, I like the most part of it. I would pass it as is if we remove the irrigation side of it because we're already in Tier 2, which means so as soon as we approve this and it goes on the books, basically every citizen in town can only water their watering system two days a week, straight off the bat. If you have a watering system and you're doing five, six, seven days, maybe it's a little much, but you're automatically going to have to go to two days. But we don't even know how we're going to enforce that unless your neighbor calls and says your sprinkler's on. So if you have cool neighbors, you're probably okay. If you don't, you're probably going to get a fine. So like I said, it's the whole, everything else kind of makes sense. Yeah, try to take less showers, try to do this, try to do that. But until we're in the wet water shortage where we know what number we have to lose, like I said, because we're already in Tier 2. So, and if we, I was told at the last meeting, Tier 3 could be 60 or it could be six months from now. Now we're telling the citizens, you can only water your landscaping one day a week, depending on your house number. And once we go to wet water shortage, you can't water your landscaping at all. So we have this great community with all these plants and they're all going to die. So, but we don't know what we're saving. We don't know if we're going to, if we tell everyone at Tier 3 that, okay, you can only water one day a week and our water usage goes from 14 to 10,000, well, then we kind of just wasted a lot of our water that we could have used. So I just don't think we have enough information and enough data to go that detailed in that. Like I said, I like everything up to that point. And if we're going to start talking about fining people and stuff, I think we need to have more planning sessions, more input from the community. But I'm a parent. The one thing I've learned as a parent, I tell those people, never make a rule that you're not prepared to enforce because then your kid realizes how weak you are. And I think this is what we have. If we put this out there just because we want to encourage people to use less water, great. But to actually have fines that we don't have a system to enforce. So for me to do a yes vote, I would need to pull out all the landscaping restrictions and that we could revisit at a future use, at a future time, once we know what those numbers are and how they will affect the community, so.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. The, a couple of thoughts there. So it is education-based, but we need to have the fine structure that's built into this in place for those bad actors that aren't going to come into compliance, that they, they just want to do that. So there is a fine structure built into this. That's just not the first place we're going to go.
Yeah.
And I also would ask if you possibly would consider on your moving the, for Tier 2 shortage, keeping it at the three days that you can water instead of two, and then for a Tier 3 shortage, going down to two days. Would you consider that as a compromise for, for the change?
No, because I, I just, I don't think it's data-driven. We don't know how much it's going to be. And if that's, and if it's that important, we should be getting the numbers. We should, we're really good at hiring consultants to tell us what we need to know. So maybe we do, you know, even Dr. Doyle had some information about how much is used of landscaping and all that. And we think we need to educate the community because I mean, I, I water every single day. I probably don't need to, but if I know what I need to do, then I can make those changes. But just, I guarantee if I just go to three days now or just change my system, it's, it's, I think we need to give people time to catch up. And like I said, if that's, if we want to do that, then let's get a planning session together. Let's hire a consultant to tell us what we should do. And, but like I said, if we're, if we're trying to hit a mark that we don't know if we're going to need to hit, I just, without the data, I don't think it's fair to the community, so.
Yeah, we do know that the data for the state of Arizona is 80% of our water is outdoor usage. And I believe Dr. Wilson mentioned it last two meetings or two weeks ago, what ours was, but I don't recall that number. All right, any other comments for members of the council before we open the public hearing?
Mayor? I definitely do. Because we are talking about, it says right here on the end, the bottom of page seven. Oh, wait, the bottom of page six, violations during federally declared Colorado River shortages for Tier 1 and Tier 2. So we start in violations based on how long you're taking a shower. So that already is not something that we can enforce. Mayor just explained that 80% of our water usage is irrigation. And what if I told you yesterday, last week alone, my family poured three concrete swimming pools? So I'm not saying put a moratorium on swimming pools, but where we need to be talking is not fighting about how long I'm taking a shower in the bathroom, but how we are going to control our irrigation systems moving forward. And I don't, this to me just seems like we're in everybody's neighborly business from who's going to pour water to how long your shower. And there's fines in here for this, for the second violation, up to 250, the second violation, 500. Now I'm telling on my neighbors all the time. Why don't we get real and talk about water conservation? Real water conservation starts with irrigation. I said it here about eight, seven, eight months ago. I brought up about water recycling systems for our swimming pools, which by far is one of the top users in Lake Havasu City. And right now, the Riviera is building some pools that are coming down the line, are bigger than this, pretty much this building. Maybe that's exaggerating, but you see what I'm saying? We're allowing swimming pools. I want swimming pools to be here, but what I'd like to see is not the water dumped down the roads. What are we doing there? What we're doing is considering if Councilwoman Lynn can pour you a glass of water or not. This is not real conservation. Let's talk real. Let's talk real. Let's throw this in the trash. I don't want to be citing anybody for having their hose on or all the washing your car outside. We're in, we're in Lake Havasu City and we, we need to do this smarter. And to tell you about the data that they want, the 2,000, and I wasn't even going to say it, but I'm going to say it. Go look it up. You can look it up. Water conservation study. In 2019, I believe it came out in 20, it said in year 2035, I had Mayor look at it the other day, not 50, but 35, we were supposed to be at 57,000 people. We're off by 10 years already. Why don't we get the proper data in place before we start fining people? Second off, it also said, I think it was almost 2050, that we'd have be at 62,000 people. And we're at 61,000. So you guys like data and data and information. Let's get it. Let's get the real stuff and we're going to get it with the water rate study. We would hope that they're going to be up to date. They admitted on the study from the get-go, they were off on some population, which stuff that happened. So again, I, I know that I tend to voice my opinion a lot, but there's a lot of confusion out there. And I, I don't want it put on the backs of our neighbors, fining neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Campbell. With all due respect, I think some of the confusion are some of your comments of placing this, the different data points of different reports that are not in front of us or not part of this document that we're talking about today. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this? Yeah, please, sir. Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Joe Navarres. I have a serious concern about your enforcement policy of this. We talking about, as Councilmember Campbell says, fining our neighbors, fining our restaurateurs for pouring a glass of water. I'm a retired police officer of 30 years. I have a couple of friends here in the audience that may support me on this. You have to be careful what you ask for. You start trying to cite people, and I believe the gentleman here from, that gave you this presentation, mentioned having code enforcement enforce this and try and cite somebody. That's very dangerous. Now you're sticking some guy out there who has no law enforcement training whatsoever and say, hey, go out and cite this guy because he used 15 gallons more than he was supposed to. He used 20 gallons more than he was supposed to. He took a 10-minute shower versus a five-minute shower. And now I want you to go cite him, cite her. Then you get that knucklehead that you're trying to cite that says, you know what? I'm not signing your citation. Now you have to call in Lake Havasu PD. It's a slippery slope. You need to be very careful of how you try to enforce this because now you're going to start wasting resources. Lake Havasu City police officers have better things to do. Then try and go and cite some guy or pick up the code enforcement guy that got his butt kicked and knocked on the ground because he was trying to serve a citation for using too much water. Again, you're just having 30 years of law enforcement experience, having seen these little ordinances that our fine city councils put out there, sometimes backfires. And then we're in a whole nother world. So just be very careful of what you ask for and how we try to enforce this.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yeah. So I, I would encourage folks to, to read this plan. Uh, this isn't, uh, talking about someone, uh, that's taking a shower too long, uh, should be, should be fined. That's not what this is at all. There, there's an education component that gives best practices. Uh, and then there is a fine structure for bad actors. Um, our code enforcement officers and animal control officers do have, um, the ability to, to make those, uh, changes. Uh, council actually just changed that, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, for, for the authority to do that. So, but thank you for your comments, sir.
Yes, Mayor.
Evening, Council. My name is Rick Lathope. You most, most of you know me already. You know I'm here. And I still can't believe, you don't have putting it in the sewer. You've taken that off. I've seen that, that was a good thing. I don't understand why we're worrying about how much Cameron gives me a glass of water not at his restaurant. Or if I get caught in the shower, showering too long or with two showerheads going, okay? Or bust my teeth too long. We're talking about, you know, a gallon, two gallons, three gallons. I'm talking about if you got a 20,000 gallon pool in one year, you're going to use 50,000 gallons. And after the year, per the industry standards, it's going to have a calcium hardness higher than you need. So you have to dump it. Now, I spoke with Mr. Lane here last week. He says his pool's four years old and that's great. I've got a lot of customers, they wouldn't swim in a pool that had four year old water. Calcium mine looks, doesn't look like it's supposed to. You invest into a pool, you're going to put at least a hundred thousand dollars in. And yeah, I agree, the city makes a ton of money off of swimming pools. But they don't make any money putting water on the street and dumping it. It costs over a period of time. And we're talking, you're talking 1,400 acre feet of water, 10% of what you use. And you're right, Mr. Lane, there's just as much water here as there was four million years ago. You're a hundred percent correct with that. But if you read in your history, you'd understand the Sahara Desert used to be wetter than this. It's location, location, location. Now I don't believe in global warming, but we have had a change. We've had a major change in our weather. We haven't gotten the rain, we haven't gotten the snow. This year is a little different. Talk Doyle Wilson, Dr. Doyle. Yeah, I love the guy. He's a very smart man. I asked Mr. Lane to ask him about the information I shared with you about pools. He will tell you, it, this is not something that's just blown out. I know what the pools do here. We've run evaporation tests on a lot of pools. We know what they go through, we know what they do and they just sit there. We're talking about a guy washing a car whether to put a on off valve on the hose. Maybe he uses 10 gallons more, but you let them drain the pool down the street. What's the damage to the street? Over a period of time. And he's going to do it 12 to 18 months. That's about what everybody does it here in town. Okay. I, I just don't get it. I don't understand where, why we're making a silly ordinance. Why aren't we being proactive today? Set the standards. Lake Havasu is the gateway of the water for the West Coast, being Phoenix, LA, Southern California. Why don't, why doesn't Lake Havasu buckle down? We're not going to run out of water because it's here. It's going to continue to fill our aquifers. Okay. But when it's not here, we're going to know it, it ain't going to be here. I don't understand why we cannot be proactive. Quit piddling about how much we drink in a restaurant, fresh water, how, whether we wash our car, have a hose on it. But it, it, it just, you guys are ignoring the biggest user at any residence is the swimming pool. It's the biggest users and it's not managed. You can drain it any day you want. You can drain it twice a week if you want. You just got to pay for putting it in. That's wrong, totally wrong. And I would like to see the council step up and do something about it instead of just push, push the can down the road because that's all you're doing. You're doing absolutely nothing for anybody here and that lives in this town with a silly ordinance like that. It's not saving any water. And I agree with the gentleman here, you're asking, you're, you're going to cause nothing but a problem having somebody up there try to write a ticket for washing a car, a bubbler. And like Nancy said, irrigation, all the pools are tied to the irrigation lines. Not the household line, irrigation line. But nobody will talk about it because they're worried about how much money the pool industry. I'm not saying cut back the pool industry. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yeah. Vice Mayor Lane, did you have a comment?
I did, I just wanted to, to reiterate something because we got off track a little bit here. When it comes to code enforcement, you're absolutely right. But we don't send code enforcement out to write tickets all the time. That is a very last resort. We seek compliance. We, a code enforcement officer goes out there and says, hey, I understand there may be an issue. We'd like to educate you. It's months down the road before anybody would ever receive a citation for something like that. Just the way code enforcement works today, it's exactly the same way. And this is just a plan, uh, as the gentleman said, we need to have a plan in place. That's all this is, a conservation plan. Nobody's going to really be going out there and looking at things, but we're using federal guidelines to put together an ordinance should things go down the line and we do have a water shortage. That's all it is, is a plan in place so that we have something there should these things come to fruition. Hopefully they won't. As of right now, we're fine. But we want to have a plan in place in case there is. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the public hearing?
Let's try not to stand up, but I'm going to stand up. So I agree with Jim Doyle, you have to have data to make a decision. Agree with David Lane, you should have an emergency plan. And you say we're in tier two right now, but I think we're in tier two as an answer, but based on false data. So there is a lot of people in this country getting rich in the world, getting rich on this, on this water scare, this water narrative that we're running out of water. And there's people right now at the World Economic Forum and Switzerland, multi-millionaires getting rich off this facade. There is no water shortage. There is no water shortage, as David Lane has mentioned. We have plenty of water. Okay. But as the gentleman said, with the RO pool system, that is a great idea. It may cost you $800, $900 to drain your pool, but you're saving thousands and thousands of gallons of water going down the sewer drain. I, I would not, if I was on the council, I would not vote for this because it's garbage in, garbage out. It doesn't do a dang thing to say water. The data is not correct. We've had record snowfall in the Rocky Mountains the last three years in a row. That's where we get our water from. California is underwater right now, underwater. I have five grown kids live there. It's unbelievable what's going on over there. Record snowfall in the Sierras. I know that's not where we get our water from, but they have a water management problem, not a water problem. They don't capture, 60% of the record snowfall and the rain is going to go right into the ocean in California. They don't capture their water. This is not a good idea. People are panicking and using the citizens to regulate showers and irrigation. Nancy talked about irrigation, I think we're a year ago, we're talking about bubblers and she was almost laughed off the stage because we have a recommendation on the, on the website of the proper plants to use. But I think we should step back a bit, shell this idea and down the road, maybe do some, do something different. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council, uh, during this public hearing? Seeing, uh, now we'll close this public hearing. Uh, before we, uh, engage back in some conversation and a motion, uh, Mr. Newton, do you have, uh, some thoughts you want to share on this item?
Uh, surely, uh, Mayor, uh, council, uh, conversations, uh, sidebars with the city attorney and, and, uh, myself as we kind of take a look at this, um, listening to the conversations are coming from, from council. Um, you know, some of that is, is the intention of some of the language in here and in terms of showers is educational piece, right? Please take shorter showers. Uh, please turn off the water when you're not brushing your teeth, uh, or, or shaving, those types of things. But it certainly is causing confusion and, uh, we, we don't want to, the message can't be sent that the, the city is going to find you if you take a, take a long shower. Uh, but even our code enforcement officers don't want to be part of that. All joking aside, one of the things that, that, that we have a, that we're having a conversation about as an option for council, what if, uh, we did away, uh, this is, this is, this is a big sweeping change in this document right now. What if we did away with, uh, tier one, tier two and tier three? And what if we identified what measures would automatically go into place, uh, during a, an actual, uh, a wet water shortage? We could ramp up, uh, we have, we have lots of great, uh, educational pieces and, and information in terms of how to conserve water. Uh, and by the way, every little bit helps. You can't point at one thing and say a shorter shower is not going to save us. No, but a shorter shower and, uh, other measures that you take around the house and, and smart appliances and, and, uh, being smart with your irrigation, all those things add up. That's the, that's the whole, uh, intention with, with this code, but, um, we're losing some of that. And, uh, so just an option for council, uh, we could figure it out in terms of what that, uh, what that motion would be and, and so forth, if the council wants to pursue something more along those lines. So all the language in terms of tier one, uh, where we're, we're, we're encouraging, right? So I think the encouragement language would, would go away. Uh, we could put it in our educational pieces and then we're left with during a wet water shortage, which quite literally is, um, we contact Bureau of Reclamation every year and we say, we want to, we want, uh, based on our needs in Havasu, the entire community is going to use about 14,000 acre feet of water this next year. BOR, can we, we like to order that. They come back and say, yeah, we have 28,000, um, allocation, we'll, we'll allow you to use that with levels of Lake Mead and Lake Powell. That's a real thing that, 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 that we see. That with the theory is if those levels continue to decline, that is our water source, um, that the BOR could come back. Maybe they never will, maybe they, they do. Emergency response plan is something that Vice Mayor, uh, alluded to in comparison to this. That's what we're talking about. We're okay right now, um, but we need to plan for the future. We need to plan for a possible scenario sometime in the future that might not go the way we want it to go. And what are we going to do at that time? Isn't that better if, if we have some of those conversations here today about a possible scenario that could happen in, in the future rather than waiting for it to happen and then, uh, you know, trying to react to it? So that's really, that's the intent of what we're trying to do. Uh, we're not trying to police showers. So, uh, again, I guess I'll, I'll stop there. We can go any direction the council wants to go. We're just trying to, uh, forward, forward think in terms of what the future needs of our community is, uh, what BOR might, uh, might indicate in, in the future years. But we're, that's all ears.
Mr. Mayor, my question for you. So how does that, how does that work? So is, are there dates associated with that? Like there's a certain time of the year we put in our request, we find out a few months later and then we know as of this date, we're going to have a water shortage. And I guess so, the second part to that is if we, if we know those dates and we know there's going to, we're going to have to go from 14,000 to 12,000, then can we come back as a council and say, okay, you need to water your plants two days a week, you need to not, I mean, if everyone's draining their pools, okay, let's do them. You can't drain your pools for at least a year till we find out if we pull out of it. Can we do things at that point? Because Havasu has done a lot. We use less water than we used in the nineties with less population. So I would hate to punish our, our citizens with their everyday use of water. And like I said, with our water rate study, we probably will, those that use more water will be paying more. So I guess my question is, can we, how, how do those dates work? And can we, like I said, wait till we get to that point? Do we have time to make changes prior to the wet water shortage?
Yeah, we have plenty of time. Again, we're, this is a possible future scenario that may not ever come to fruition. But we need to be prepared to be thinking about those things now today. That's what we're talking about. So, uh, uh, you know, the snowpack, uh, did well this, so this, this is, this is existing year. Uh, in previous years, it hasn't for, for several years. But the western, uh, the western side of the Rockies, we've seen the, uh, impact on the snowfall. We'll see when it melts, what that actually means in terms of water levels and, and Mead and Powell. We don't know, uh, in terms of what that scenario would be. We got plenty of time in terms of what that, uh, what that, uh, that date might occur or might not occur. In terms of certain water usage per month or year, um, we have to figure that out. So BOR would come back and say, no, you have to reduce your total water consumption in the entire community, whether that's at a city park or, or whatever it is across the board. You need to reduce it by, just throwing magic numbers out, 10%, 15%, 20%. Who knows? Again, this is a possible future scenario, uh, that, that may or may not come, uh, uh, come to fruition.
Thank you. I, I do like that idea. I, like I said, if we're stripping that, it sounds like we need to start all over. It, but like I said, if we're talking about something that may or may not happen, but we're punishing people right now, you know, as of tomorrow, as of, within the 30 days, 90 days, whatever, we're telling people they would have to only water their plants two days a week. So I, like I said, I, if that's what we're going to do, I like the idea of waiting till the wet water shortage. And we, if we do have time, then we should maybe get a plan to work on, continue to work on education and let people know, um, some of the details in here I think are good. And like I said, if we've got a stripped down version, encouraging everyone on the educational side of it, then let's do that. But the fining people is very concerning to me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Doyle. Councilmember Campbell?
Um, final statement on that is it wasn't a while, it was a while ago that we hired somebody to come in and investigate all of our pipelines underground in the Lake Havasu City, where we were going to identify broken pipes. That could be beneficial to us. I know that when I spoke with the legislators, they told us that recharge is a very huge part of the budget moving forward. I know that our local public works, uh, director is possibly going to be looking at another recharge system, which is a injection well that will go and take our affluent, which I'm going to say non-potable affluent. It's not something we can drink by all means, but one of the best, best things is our earth and our atmosphere. We can recharge some of our affluent back into the ground. Let's be honest, I've done way more research on this than I needed to, but I've been told that could be, take decades to get here. We're all sitting up here to save Lake Havasu City's traffic infrastructure for my grandchildren, your grandchildren, great grand-grandchildren. We all want Lake Havasu City to be sustainable and amazing for decades to come. But let's wheel this back, let's, as a city, get those recharges in place. Let's work with affluent, let's work with, uh, find out where the breakages are within the commu, the city streets that we talked about. Uh, we've had some pipes that we've all been redoing lately because they've been busting all over the city. That's on us. I want us to fix our house first before we start telling you how to manage your house.
And, uh, we are doing all those things. Everything you just mentioned, we're doing. And so we have, we have the Vado wells and there's a reason why we're using less water today with a much larger population, uh, than we have. So, uh, we have an option in front of us. We have the, um, water conservation plan as written with the changes that we discussed two weeks ago at our council meeting, uh, for a possible motion. Or do we have a consensus of the council to, uh, take out, uh, the tier components of it and, uh, only have the wet water, um, portion of that?
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses?
Uh, I don't like taking out all forms of tiers out of it. I'm not going to worry about my health until I have a heart attack. You know what I mean? I'm, I need to do some things proactively now, kind of deal. Uh, so to wait till we're in a wet water shortage to do anything is, uh, to me, a little crazy. It's going to be painful. That's going to be real painful if we ever get to that point. And so, uh, to completely get rid of that altogether, I think is literally the worst thing we can do for our citizens and our community. I mean, God forbid if, if our lake drops, you know, and we're still sitting here wait, worried about, are, can I still water my agave? You know what I mean? Like, what do we, I, I, I don't agree with that approach at all. There needs to be something in there. I agree that there are some things, I don't ever want to go into somebody's home and tell them what to do. Do I want to inform them that they should? Yeah, but I'm never going to sit in code enforcement to tell them that. Um, I think we've all agreed on that and I think we beat that, you know, beat that dead horse. But, uh, uh, I would, I would like a lot of this to be centered around landscaping, around pools, around, um, the, those, those big, big, big factors. If nothing else, just at least leaving a tier three, because to get rid of everything is just crazy. That doesn't make any sense to me at all.
And as we discussed last week, or two weeks ago, this is a, a living, breathing document. So as it's implemented, if there's changes that need to be.
I, I've been on board with this because I've, I've always said in my head, this is a jumping off point. You know, this is where we go and then we adjust, we adjust and make it right. I'm, I'm those gray area guys. I've dealt with code enforcement, I think more than anybody up here. We have a great code enforcement, um, department that, uh, I'm sorry, what? A code enforcement office, uh, that does a great job of informing and educating, gaining compliance and, uh, without, without, I'm not worried about the job we're going to do there. But I would never even want to send her into somebody's house. So.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Lane?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a suggestion because we all, we all agree, but we all disagree, if that makes any sense. if that makes any sense. Because there's some portions of this that we we all like, there's some portions we don't like. The city manager has said that he'd like to work on this some more, and we have time to work on it some more. So I'm thinking and have to ask the city attorney if it's a good motion to table this for now to give the city staff more time to work on this. As much as I hate to bring it back and have another two and a half hour conversation, because this is the second, third, fourth time we've done this, I still think it needs more work. So Ms. Gary, do you think that's a good idea? Mr. Mayor, do you think that's a good idea?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane, I mean, that is one of the options that that we could look at. Ms. Gary?
Yes, yes, you can absolutely do that. You, though, before you leave this meeting, you have to give us some direction. I mean, right now, we are from everywhere to throw it in the trash, to no, we don't want to get rid of tiers, to we want to take irrigation out, to we need to do something. Guys, I mean, it's all over the place. I mean, if we walk away now, I don't have any idea how to rewrite this, other than we need to do something with it.
Just do what I say.
And we hear so much. Perfect. I mean, we can, I mean, we can start, we can start with that as a jumping off point. If everybody agrees, like, we'll go back, restructure it so there are only really fines and penalties or restrictions having to do when we hit tier three, and then we go into wet water. So I mean, we can come back and kind of have that be the next introduction, or we can start with an adoption, or we can do that now, if everybody agrees that that's kind of a point they want to start with. Yeah, I mean, I think it's clear that we don't want enforcement measures for tier one, taking showers and and water at restaurants. So we hear you, we understand that. The intent was for that to be educational, not necessarily, but that's what we're hung up on. So I mean, I think we're pretty, everybody seems to be in agreeance, we can take tier one off, those restrictions off. Tier two, there's not a whole lot there.
Yeah, so at this point, let's get consensus on the council. Do we want to entertain the idea of tabling it with giving some direction to staff this afternoon, this evening? Is that by nod, do we want to table the item, but we have to give some direction? Okay, so we have consensus there.
Yes.
I would, I'll start with the, if we do the fine structure at tier three, we're already in a tier two. So that's, I think that would be off the table. Is everyone comfortable with the fine structure starting at tier three?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I was just like, the one thing I think we all, we all agree, we need this, and we need a form of this, I think, but we need data. Like, if we're playing this whole what if, what if this, what if that, what if, what if we do really well with being on tier two, and we did this right now, and the irrigation, and we kill everyone's plants, and we do all this stuff, and we go from 14,000 to 12,000, and then our next request, we, okay, well, if you get 12, you only get 10. Well, if we hadn't done anything, we'd have been at 12, and we'd have been fine anyway. So I think we need to look at, I think we all want that data, like, if we have to go down to 2000.
With all due respect, as it's going, we will continue to collect data, we will bring it back to you, but it's a very fluid situation. Never been in a shortage before, this is our first time. We don't have data to pull from the past to tell you what happened when this or that happened. We simply don't have that. You're asking for data for landscaping purposes and that sort of thing, and we can pull that, and we can bring that, and we can supply you with that. But as far as what's going to happen, I don't know. What's going to happen if some of these are implemented? I don't know, because we've never done it before. But we can provide that to you, we'll keep it very fluid, we can come back and adjust as necessary, it'll be easy, we'll have to, we'll have to do it quick. If it becomes an emergency, then it becomes an emergency, and we deal with it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Dolan, as well, too, in terms of data, just so we're clear, we, the city does, we have the ability to look at what water usage is per meter. Beyond the meter, we have no idea what happens after that, after that fact. So whether that's you're running your dishwasher 24 hours a day, or landscaping your your yard, or, you know, we have some data, big jumps will indicate a leak, or big jumps will indicate you're filling the pool, but that's the type of data that we have. We will never be able to have data to say, all right, our residents are spending X amount of acre feet, or cubic feet, or gallons on landscaping. That's not a thing, just so the expectation is there.
That's also a key point, we're not in a shortage until they tell us you get less water. There's a national and a regional and all this other stuff, but Lake Havasu does not have a water shortage until they say, you don't get your regular allotment, you need to use less. So I think my point is, is if we're going to then tell the citizens, you need to cut back because we need to cut down by 10%, we need to have a plan to cut 10 to 15%. Cutting an X amount prior is concerning to me because we don't know what it's going to do. Because we're not in a shortage until we're told you can't get it.
So we do have a federal shortage?
The system is in a shortage, and there are, there are decreases in water that are happening, it just isn't affecting our as contract holders yet.
Because we've done so well.
So we need to stop saying it's not a shortage, there is a federally declared shortage on the Colorado River. It is all data based, it is all based, our, what we have to look to are the levels to mead. There's levels, and when we reach certain levels, that's when certain tiers are called. That simple. Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell?
My direction is to definitely go back at the real players in play, which is the swimming pools that we know are getting built every single day, all the time. I don't want a moratorium on them, but we have the data that, like, I don't know exactly, but it's a massive amount of water used. And I remember being as a child in Anaheim Hills, my dad put a cover on our swimming pool, and nobody could swim in it. And then ironically, floods came, and it washed it down the wash. That's, that's true story. But what I need is, this is confusing for people, because we're telling them that we have 28,000 acre feet that we have access to for anybody that wants to build a house in town. But we may not get all our allocation. We will if we submit what we want is what we pay for, am I correct?
No, it doesn't work that way. Yes, there's an allocation that we have 28,000 acre feet, then there's a water order that we have to do each year.
Right.
Water orders based on on how much flow we actually need, which this year is 14,000 acre feet. So when we, when we're talking about a wet water shortage, that's when we order the water, and they say you don't get to have that much water.
But if we build another, like, the Riviera builds out, and we need 15,000 or 16,000 acre feet, if they're not going to say, I'm sorry, you still can only have 12. That's where people are confused, that's what I'm trying to say, is it sounds like we might get a reduction, but then how are you still building houses? Well, better yet, why are we building swimming pools, you know? But we're not going to stop, I don't believe in a moratorium is needed with the data that we've received at this point. And I would like to see the water rate study, we're getting ready to do that, give us three months, can we table this for three months? Get some data in front of us, we have a new governor coming down the road.
That's what we're talking about right now. So let's get off the soapbox, and let's talk about some real pieces of information that we're trying.
That's what I'm trying to say. Can we table this for three months until we get the water rate studies in play?
Absolutely.
And then take a look at that, and we'll have new government direction, governor direction, too.
Direction from council, so we need to give direction to staff right now, and you're saying no swimming pools, but you don't want a moratorium. I don't understand what you're saying.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we don't have the right information. I would like to table this conversation until our water rate study is over with, and we could take a look at all of our conservation directions that way. Because I do believe that if we do a conservative approach, we might see completely different end result. And the bottom line is, is if we do a great job on conserving, how are we going to get the proper data for the water rate study? I, I don't, I think that's going to, if we reduce everybody's water usage now, that we're going into a study, right now, they're going to use the water uses that we have now. So I just would like to see this tabled until after the water rate study is done, and then let's talk about pools and irrigation and an emergency plan. Talk about all of it, because I don't believe it's going to happen in three months that we're going to be in a water shortage.
Okay, so no, so based on your comments, we're not talking about tabling this, we're talking about starting all over.
Yes.
Okay. What other feedbacks do we have from, from council? All right, so we, that was a good use of our last hour and a half, because we literally have given staff nothing to, to be able to come back with us.
Mr. Mayor.
So Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. My direction to staff, we have an educational component through tier one, which is, that is when the federal government says, we're in a tier one shortage, or we're in a tier two shortage, or we're in a tier three shortage. We need to have it in the document that those are educational pieces. When we're in this tier, this is what we're going to educate in request, period. When we're in this tier, this is what we're going to educate, and this is what we're going to request. Here, this is what we're going a little bit more each time. When we get to a wet water shortage, we're in trouble. Now we have to change. Does that sound reasonable to you?
I, I don't think that we're going to come to consensus tonight on this item. So how about we table it, let staff go back and work on it, we'll work on it through the rate study as well, and we're going to have to bring something back to you. No, but there's no consensus on anything that anybody is saying. There's just no, there's, there hasn't been one consensus on somebody's suggestion to, yet. So unless there, unless there is, unless there, unless everybody wants to agree, or a majority wants to agree with David just said, or if we want to have a consensus of what Cameron said.
With all due respect, I haven't heard from Jenny, I haven't heard from Michelle. I mean, not really, so.
Okay, it's, man, it's kind of a big volleyball game here.
I feel like, I feel like, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not, it's confusing on where to go from here, and we all voted on this particular item at the last meeting without this same conversation. We directed staff, they came back, and now we're back here again with another huge conversation, and my mind's trying to go back to the last meeting and read minutes to figure out, where was this conversation last time for the staff? It's, it's confusing for the staff. I don't, I don't know how to, to give you direction, because you brought it to us before, and you brought us back what we had voted on, and now there's a complete segregation of everything. So I, I don't want to send staff back to work on a document or an item to bring back to us with information we gave you, we voted on, and you bring it back, and we're sit here for three hours and debate it again with all new information. So I understand, I'm frustrated, I can't imagine how frustrated you guys are. So I have a lot to say about it, but, and no offense to anybody, but you come in with extra information that none of us have prior to a meeting, that we didn't have last meeting, we have opinions that come out at this meeting that didn't come out at last meeting. So it just gets frustrating, because I see how hard the staff works, and they bring these things back, and then we just tear it apart. So I don't have an opinion right now, I agree, I think we need to just table it, figure out what direction we want to go, and whether that's another work session, bring us back in here and waste our time again, so that we can give you some more information, and maybe it's going to be the same document you brought us today, or maybe it's going to be something else. I don't know. But that, I don't know what else to say about it. We were all here to explain, this is not the conversation that, unless you guys remember a conversation that I don't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
I've thought about it the last week, and I do, that's why my concern is the landscaping, and I love the staff, but this isn't about the staff. The staff is supposed to do what's best for the community, we're supposed to do what's best for the community, and talking to people this last week, and it was in the newspaper. So I, I do, I do think we're close. I said, like, I think we like the education side of it, but when we're actually telling citizens, you need to shut your water off, whether it be in a shower, or whether it be landscaping, without any data of, we can't tell you whether it's going to help or not, it might, we don't know how much you're using, like I said, we just don't have the data. So like I said, I was fine with it if we stripped out the landscaping restrictions and the fine. We want to keep everything in there, have it educational, and then as we get to the wet water shortage, then we have a plan. We need to cut this amount, this is what we're going to do, hopefully that's enough, if not, we'll make more changes. But like I said, to not have that data, I can't, this last week, I've just thought about it, reviewed it a lot more, and I just don't feel comfortable enforcing that onto the people with the fines. So that's, like I said, that's why I've changed in the last week. But that's also why we bring it up one week and bring it up the next week, is, you know, for discussion, and I think, you know, maybe we do have it at the planning session, or we have, I think we've come a long way, we've, we've all talked about what we like and don't like, we like the idea of, we need to have some guidance in there, but when it comes down to really telling everyone they have to shut off their water, we can't decide which water spigot we're telling them that they're allowed to shut off. No, not the shower, but the one outside for their landscaping, I don't have landscaping, so I don't care if you have to shut, you know, we just, I just don't think we're there yet.
All right, is there any additional feedback? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with this conversation, and I'm okay with that we've changed our mind on some things, because we've given the public an opportunity to digest and process this, and the same is us. So I'm okay, I would be okay with tabling this. To say staff doesn't know what we want, staff knows the direction that we're all looking at. So giving us different options, we've done this before, you can give us an A, B, C, we can work that out. I mean, you've done that before in studies that we've done. So, you know, we're talking about watching out the fines, we don't like tier one of the showers in the neighbors, we don't like those things. I think that we've given you enough information, you can come back to us with options, and maybe that is another work session. And that's a direction I would not feel comfortable with any of the changes on this or the recommendations at all tonight.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. All right, so I think everyone has had time to weigh in on this. We do need to give final direction, so there is a motion in front of us that we could adopt this as is and as was written in preparation of this meeting tonight, or a motion to table, and we will have to come back to some sort of format, whether that's a work session or a future council meeting to be able to concisely give our thoughts to, to the staff to be able to bring something back in this realm.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Yeah, I think it's time to drag this dead horse out the door. I make a motion to table this and give staff some, some time.
Second.
And we'll work on this later.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember Dolan, all in, or we're ready to vote. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is item 8.4, is Adopt Ordinance Number 23-1304, approving a planned development rezone for 555 Burkhamo Lane, track 134, block three, lot 19, from the multifamily, district multifamily planned development district, reducing the minimum required dwelling unit density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre to allow one single family home. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much. The subject property in this case measures .31 acres and is currently vacant. It's located on the north side of Burkhamo Lane, just west of Jones Drive, east of Lake Havasu Avenue South. The lots to the south across Burkhamo Lane are Zoned RE residential estates and developed with single family homes and one vacant lot. There's also a large, narrow parcel to the north, it's also Zoned RE and is vacant. The lots to the east and west are Zoned Multiple Family RM, and are a mix of vacant lots, single family, and multiple family developments. The general plan map is shown here, the, the future land use map designates the property as low density residential. This designation allows a range of four to six dwelling units per acre, and the primary use is single family residential housing. The subject property and the surrounding neighborhood are designated low density residential per the general plan, with the vast majority of the lots in the neighborhood developed as single family homes. The subject property, the proposed four units per acre, the development is in conformance with the general plan land use map, as well as the goals and policies of the general plan. The previous development code is shown here, it was updated in 2016. Prior to that update, the development code established minimum and maximum density for residential standards, but also included a note that lots of record existing at the dime of the adoption of this development code within the R3 and R4, R4 is now RM, zoning districts, need not comply with the density limitations of this table. The actual number of units allowed on these lots shall be determined through compliance with other requirements of this table, such as building heights, landscaping and parking, lot coverage, and building setbacks. Now we flash forward to the current development code. In 2016, the development code update did not carry over that note. Therefore, new developments need to comply with the minimum and maximum dwelling units density requirements shown in this table. So the subject property is zoned RM, which requires a minimum of 10 dwelling units per acre. The property measures .31 acres, therefore, the minimum number of dwelling units on this lot should be 3.1 or three units. The applicant's letter of intent asks to reduce the minimum density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre in order to build a single-family residence on the property. So at .31 acres times four units per acres, 1.24 units, which would be one unit. The development plan here shows a single-family home with attached garages. The proposal meets all the RM development standards except for this minimum dwelling unit density. And no objections received from any of the reviewing agencies or departments for this request. And the Planning Commission heard this request at the December 21st meeting and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Morris or for the applicant? Seeing now, we'll go ahead, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. Again, this item is coming before us with a recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Commission of six to zero in favor of this rezone, and it, the general plan does support this rezone as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion.
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 23-1304, approving a planned development rezone for 555 Burkhamo Lane, tract 134, block 3, lot 19, for multiple-family district to multiple-family planned development district, reducing the minimum required dwelling unit density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre to allow one single-family home.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.5 is Adopt Ordinance Number 23-1305, approving a zone change for 4017, 4021, 4025, and 4029 Window Rock Road East, APNs 11005, 025, 023, 027, and 003, to amend and reconfigure the existing single-family residential estates, and residential estates, and residential agriculture zoning district boundaries. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much. The subject properties are four undeveloped parcels totaling 80 acres located at the eastern edge of the city on the north side of Window Rock Road. They're bordered on the west by 58 acres of undeveloped land within Lake Havasu City. The other budding properties are all within Mojave County's jurisdiction and include Arizona State Trust land to the north, privately held lots to the east, and Horizon 6 residential subdivision to the south. The subject property was annexed into the city in June of 2016 and assigned the city's RA zoning designation, which most closely, was most similar to the county zoning at that time. In January of 2018, portions of the properties were rezoned to R1 and RE to accommodate a proposed 84-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The properties in Mojave County's jurisdiction are zoned residential agriculture, and the properties abutting, the property to the west and the city limits is zoned single-family residential R1. The subject lots are a mix of single-family R1, residential estates RE, and residential agricultural RA. The general plan future land use map designates the property as both mountain protection area and low-density residential. The mountain protection designation's primary use is open space, and a secondary use of rural residential development similar to the city's RA residential zoning. The low-density residential designation's primary use is single-family housing, which characteristic of most of the R1 and RE neighborhoods in the city. The applicant's letter of intent explains that since the previous zoning approval, the federal regulations for water of the United States have changed, which resulted in allowing more of the property to be developed. Based on the Army Corps of Engineers determination, the property owner has modified the previous lot layout and zoning areas. The requested zoning amendment will establish zoning to allow approximately 145 lots, including 105 lots on about 40 acres to be zoned R1, that's shown in green, 40 larger residential lots, about 20 acres to be zoned RE, which are the red lots. The balance of the property, approximately 20 acres, will remain RA and will be undeveloped. All the lots are proposed to meet the R1 and RE development standards, and no exceptions are being requested. Sewer and water services for the property are available from Lake Havasu City. However, Window Rock Road right-of-way in this area is within Mojave County's jurisdiction. Therefore, street improvements and utilities, including curb, gutter, sidewalks, water, sewer lines, will need to be addressed in partnership between the city, county, and developer as part of the subdivision review process. The Planning Commission heard this request at the December 21st meeting and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Morris or the applicant? I, I do have a question for the applicant if, yeah. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Terry Brierton, Lomas Land Company.
Hi, hi Terry, welcome, thank you for being here. The question I have is on the open space, so what, what do you intend for that open space to be?
Well, it's going to be, well, it's mountains, so it's, we're going to, it's going to, maybe some trails and stuff like that, and, like, where you can see where the, the retention basin is, right there in the corner, that's going to be like an access, so that the people can walk. And then in the back portion is the Arizona state land, we can use that too. And so that's what we're going to, you know, just open space.
Okay.
You know, and we're not, we're well, well below of what we're allowed as far as the density, you know, we're only at 1.81, we're allowed up to six units per acre. And we've already, we've already submitted for a preliminary plat, so we've done the traffic analysis, and it's coming out favorable. Like Luke said, we're working through the, the county and, and the city and us to, but right now, the road will be widened, the paved road, right now, the current Window Rock is 24 feet wide paved. We will be widening it to 42 feet, which is the city standard. Everything we're doing is per city standard, we're asking for nothing, but that will help alleviate the congestion, so it's going to be 42 feet wide. And then when the adjacent property is developed, they're probably widening theirs too, so it'll be, everything there will be widened.
Okay.
And our traffic is study, you know, turned out favorable. We're putting in 250,000 gallon water tank, so we're, we're, we're not tapping in, we're not putting the strain on the city water system. Our sewer system's already been analyzed, it's, everything works out fine with that, so.
So the topography of that open space, it's, it's a mountain?
I mean?
It's a mountain, that, the topography of that?
Yeah, and some of it still will be like a wash, and it's pretty nice.
So is there any opportunity that in a few decades, someone comes back before a future council to want to rezone that use to increase density, or would that, because of our general plan currently, the requirement is that has to stay open space?
That could be a possibility, someone could come forward in the future to rezone that. We'd have to look at the general plan, see what their intent is, what the requested zoning is, and then whether that requires an amendment to the general plan. Most likely it would, because it sounds like it would take up that mountain protection, the primary use is supposed to be open space. If they're reducing that in such a way that it's less than half of that area, let's say, that's definitely more than, more, or less open space than development. And it's allowed to have at least one dwelling unit per acre, but again, it can't be, that's a secondary use. So the primary use still has to be open space, so we would measure that by area. In this case, the area of the open space is well under the 50%. The number of units that, dwellings that may be in that open, that mountain protection area is, does not exceed one unit per acre. So everything's kosher the way it is now, but if someone comes in the future, we would reexamine and see what their proposal was.
Okay.
Plus, it is mountainous, so it's very hard to develop. It's kind of very costly to develop that portion of the property.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. And then what is the, are the roadways going to be private roadways?
No, they'll be public.
Okay, and this will be an HOA?
I mean?
This will be an HOA?
What we're going to do is, we're going to, you know, sell individual lots, and then, you know, have like a review board to review the architectural design, so we're doing a nice project. And, and so we're going to have it to standards that, for development for the potential buyers, owners.
Excellent. And then where does that access road go to?
That is a future access to the adjacent property that has an approved preliminary plat, so that actually lines up with that project.
Okay.
And city, city staff, it's, we recommend we put that in there.
Got it, okay. All right, and so all of the access then to this particular development is through a county road into?
Yes.
City property?
Right now.
Okay.
But if that other property ever gets developed, then that'll be another access.
Okay. And you've talked with the county already, at least preliminary conversations about the widening of the road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The, the, the county wants us to maintain the city standards, which is, we're going to, right now, it's a 50-foot right-of-way, we're increasing it to 60 feet, and widening the paved portion to 42 feet with a sidewalk on our side and no sidewalk on the county side.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you for that information. Are there any other questions for the applicant or Mr. Morris, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time, and I think I missed what you had said. You're going to widen Window Rock Road, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, are you widening it all the way down to Lakeside Drive, or just in front of the portion that you own?
Just the, I mean, part of our, just in front of our property.
So it'll go from 24 feet to 40 feet, and then back to 24 feet?
Yes. Right now, like I said, yes.
Okay. And then the other access road that the mayor discussed, does that line up? How wide is that? And does it line up with this area here, Chickasaw Drive, or that other piece of property?
All our, all our right-of-ways will be 60 feet, and the streets will all be 42 feet, curb to curb, face to face. So all the streets, all the new streets will be 42 feet paved with a 60-foot right-of-way.
Okay, Luke, can you go through that?
Yes, your question about the connector road inside here, this access road here?
How wide is that?
That roadway is typically going to be 60 feet if it's a drive, or if it's a limited, it could be as, as narrow as 50, but generally it's going to be 50 feet, 60 feet. And that, the idea is that would connect to, I'm going to slide back here a little bit, it would connect to a future development that would be on this portion. So here's the subject property, we're going to the west, that road would connect here and offer a second connection through the adjacent property that already has a preliminary plat approved, and it shows connecting into Angel Fish Drive onto Chickasaw, also has connections onto Window Rock Road for that preliminary plat that's been approved for the next-door project. So there'll be extra connections through that property, as well as connections to Window Rock Road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
So this is just a zoning change, do they then have to come back for a development agreement with the city if they're signing roads over to us and putting in infrastructure and all that, and does that come back before council?
What's going to happen is that we'll have to be, we've been in touch with the county, with their Public Works Department, our Public Works, talking about what improvements we'll be looking for, each of the jurisdictions, and how we'll work together. There are some development agreements with the county, are memorals of understanding about maintenance for different roadways. Those may need to be amended, those are things that will be looked at, and those will be addressed during the plating process, the preliminary and final plating process. This project is, has a preliminary plat that's been reviewed once, there have been comments that need to be addressed, both from the county and the city, so they're going through that process for the preliminary plat to address those things. And the things like agreements would come out of that. If they had private sewer and water systems here, they would be in a development agreement for that, they're proposing public, so at this point, I don't anticipate a development agreement for the infrastructure. But if there are other things about roadways, they may need to be addressed, and those will, we'll look at those when the development occurs.
So is that, I mean, we put water and sewer right up to their property and they put it all, or we putting the infrastructure in throughout this entire community?
And that's what we're working through on the preliminary plat process with the, with the county, so I don't have an answer for you right now. We know it will be resolved, there'll be a way to get it done, it's just, what does that look like right now? We don't know, we're in the process of going through that.
And does that come back to council for approval?
The preliminary plat will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval, and then based on their approval, then the developer will put the subdivision plans together, all the improvement plans for the final plat, and then that will, final plat approval will come to council.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's a development agreement, typically that needs to go along with that, that will typically come along at the same time as the final plat.
I could add something. Right now, in our negotiations, we're putting in all the infrastructure, nothing will be charged to see, we're putting that 250,000-gallon water tank all at our expense.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Any other members of the council have any questions for Mr. Morris or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? And we actually did have one citizen sign up, Ms. Karen Johnson?
Good evening, welcome.
I got a couple questions. Has anybody from either boards went out there and looked at the roads and what they're You know, because the road is narrow, yes, they're saying they're going to widen it. This directly affects me. I have a 65-foot rig, the horse, the horse trailer and the truck, 65-foot long. I have to use almost both lanes to get into my driveway. Now, I don't feel like that I should have to go to the expense of changing out my wall. And I can't on one side, actually, both sides I can't. So if they put curbs in, I'm going to be ruining tires, trying to get over them. I'm, I'm concerned about the traffic. 80 single-family homes, it's not going to be just twice a day, it's going to be pretty much all day long. There's the workers, they don't run the speed limit. The kids going to school, weekend traffic, there will be more than, you know, amount of traffic on that road. The roads are not in shape to be running all this traffic. So I'm assuming they're going to redo the road. I don't know, but it'll never hold up to all that traffic. I just, I didn't buy out there to have suburbia or whatever. This is all, this is mostly horse property out there. And we try to ride down the road, we're not going to be able to do that. I don't now because of the truck traffic. So I guess, are we, if we're in a tier-two water shortage, where's all this water coming from? Are these people going to be building pools at these houses? And if they do, well then, you know, there's another issue. So the people, there was a, a guy that was in here the last time, that brought in signatures for the people from Lakes, was it Lakeside, down to McCullough. 50, 62 people? 92? Were against that, because that road, I don't know how, you can't widen that road. So all these people are going to be, this traffic, it's bad enough, you're trying to go down through there. The big trucks come through there, which they have to, because of the corner at Lakeview and Window Rock. You can't come around when you come from McCullough to there, you cannot make that turn. Well, if you, you could, but you have to take up both sides of the road. And then that hill comes down like this to the stop sign. And so you're, you've got your whole rig out over there, trying to come around there. Yes, those people have to stop at that stop sign, but you're still right in the middle of the road to make that turn. That's why most everybody goes down all the way to Window Rock, all the way down to McCullough from Window Rock, because they can't hardly make that turn. So that's my, there's a few other things on here, but I know I'm probably running short of time, so.
Yeah, no, thank you for your comments, Karen. I, I struggled just a little bit on your comment, you can't, you shouldn't have to change your wall, what, I don't know what that means.
I have a wall.
If you're just talking into the microphone for those at home, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So to go into my driveway, I have a wall, I don't have it gated, but it was all built before I got there. So on, when you come in from down by McCullough, on the right side, there's like a tower, I think it's a telephone tower, okay? Then there's the water lines right there, and there's a little jag of a wall right there. If I don't get over to the other side of the road just about, I almost hit that tower with the back end of my trailer. I have to really watch, I come that close to that bugger. Come in. Okay, that's how big the rig is. Now, I'm not the only one with a big rig, but that's where it's.
So would widening the road be helpful for you? I would?
It would, as long as they don't put curbs in the middle.
Got it, okay.
Like center, center dividers, because if they put a big?
Oh, medians.
Medians, whatever.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
If they put that in there, I can't get over far enough.
Yes, okay.
So this directly affects me pulling my horse trailer in and out of my driveway.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris, they're not planning to do medians, are they?
A median is not a standard feature on a 60-foot wide right-of-way, so don't, no, there would not be a median there.
Okay, and then as far as if there was a curb on, on Karen's side, it, I'm sure there should be a driveway bump out, I don't know what those are called, but.
Well, as we anticipate, the curb will be on the north side, all the residences now are on the south side of Window Rock Road, on the county side, so we don't. So we don't anticipate curb gutter and sidewalk on the county side. It looks like it may be anticipated on the city side, on the north side of Window Rock Road.
Okay. And then this is a unique rezoning, just because we're taking county roads into a city-owned property. So what, what is our process to talk about traffic from Window Rock till Lakeside Road? And if that's a hard turn to make, what, what did we do to know that's okay?
Thank you for the question. There, with the preliminary plat, there was a initial traffic study submitted that was reviewed by the county and the city and found to be, we want more information. So we asked that more information be provided that would address the concerns from the traffic all the way from McCullough Boulevard to this project. And what's the proposal for the improvements that are required or suggested for that traffic study? So the applicant is in the process of getting that. I'm not sure where he is in that process, but when he has that, he'll resubmit it and we'll do a second review for the preliminary plat, ensure it meets all the requirements that are outlined.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is still a public hearing. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion. So again, the zoning issue in front of us is coming to us with a vote of seven to zero in favor of the rezoning request from our Plating and Zoning Commission. So any additional comments, questions, or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I know what I'm voting on here. So the only access road into this development is Window Rock, correct?
Correct, Window Rock is the access.
That's the only one. So I don't want to get in the same mess that we are up in the foothills. So if they decide later on to develop that property where that access road is, that's additional housing up there. Still only one road going in Window Rock, correct?
Well, if the adjacent property gets developed per the preliminary plat that's approved, they have access off of Window Rock, not from Window Rock, but onto Angel Fish Drive. I'll go flip back here.
I just, I.
So if this property here got, I'm sorry, cut you off.
I'm sorry, I just, I, I guess because I can't see the whole picture of what property is behind that access road. I know we're not discussing that today, but I'm assuming that's the plan, that they're going to go ahead and try to do that. I just don't want to be in the same situation we are in the foothills, where there's only one access road to get in there. And as it shows right now, Window Rock is the only way in there, correct?
Window Rock is the only way into this project at this point. Once this 80, 58-acre piece, piece to the west is developed, it's showing an additional access through Chickasaw, and I believe it's Angel Fish Drive, that would, and this project would have a connector road that would go through it onto the subject that we're talking about now, onto this subdivision. So there would be another access way, road access that's not on Window Rock Road. It would come through the other project when it develops.
Okay.
And the traffic study, for me, the traffic study that we've asked is including this adjacent 58 acres.
It is, the one behind it.
So it's going to look at all of it, yeah, as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I understand exactly what Councilmember Lynn is talking about because I did drive out there and I did look at it. And when you, when you go off of Lakeside Drive down to McCullough Boulevard on Window Rock, that's a very narrow. I mean, it's bad enough up on Cherry Tree, but this road is just a narrow roadway with all those houses. With that being said, we're not approving any houses. This is just a rezone for the property. So I myself, I don't have a problem rezoning the property, but I don't know that I will, would approve building that many houses when that's the only access between McCullough Boulevard and Lakeside Drive. So, but I would make a motion to rezone the property unless there's other questions.
Yeah, I have one.
Councilmember Campbell?
One more statement, maybe you can assist me, but I'm up there a lot. And if I remember correctly, at the end, so the farthest away, like mountainside, we have an access road that connects Lakeview, Eagle, Gold, it's on the other side. You know, there's where it says South Lakeside Drive. I thought they had a duplicate road on the other side of the mountain, I mean, other side of Donkey Acres. Do you see where they connect? Like, do you see where South Lakeside Drive is right here? I believe there's a connection across theirs, across, that cuts through to Lakeview, Gold Springs, all of that side. Can somebody clarify if I'm correct? I can't, oh, there you go.
I, I believe.
Can you see, there it is. Do you see, there, there it is. There's all those access ways in there too. It's a little bit longer way to get there, but if we're talking about traffic, do you guys see what he has up there on the top? That's what I'm referring to. It wouldn't be the most optimum way to get in there, but it is several different, was that, you can't?
You can get to Window Rock, there's one way in, one way out of Window Rock. There's no way you can get in and out.
Yeah, thank you for that information, but we need to stay on the microphone. I'm sorry for people at home. So yeah, there, there's the residents that live out in that neighborhood reported in response to Councilmember Campbell's questions. There is, there's only one way in and one way out. There is no connection based on, on the comments that were just made.
Yes, it does look kind of misleading on this map. It's kind of hard to see, but this shows South Red Rock Road, but it really does not connect through there. This is a, looks like a, maybe a driveway that goes through these private properties. It's not really an approved road, is my understanding also. So even though it looks like it goes through, in reality, it does not.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification because I just recall driving up there before years ago. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lynn?
Yeah, I did drive out there and there's dirt roads that go out there, but Window Rock Road ends right there. But you can get on, on Red Rock Road, you can get onto Lakeview and Gold Springs and to Littlefinger, but you still have to go out to Lakeside Drive. There's a dirt road that goes from Littlefinger over to Trotwood, but there's no other access to get through there. Everything has to go out onto Lakeside Drive and across Lakeside Drive down to McCullough.
All right, any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Lynn, did you still want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it to come back up. I'll make the motion for the, for the rezone, as I said. I move to adopt ordinance number 23-1305, approving a zone change for 4017, 4021, 4025, and 4029. Window Rock Road East, APNS 110-05-025, 023, 027, and 003. To amend and reconfigure the existing single-family residential, residential estates, and residential agricultural zoning district boundaries.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lynn. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Any additional discussion? Um, I would just mention before we go to the vote, I do think that additional access is going to be something that would want to be discussed going forward, so. All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.6 is approve the purchase of two Eaton UPS uninterrupted power sources from Ramtech. Mr. Baskett?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, or good night at this point. For this item, we're requesting approval to purchase two UPSs for the courthouse, also known as, it stands for uninterrupted power source. Two of them are needed because one is going to be located in the first floor data center, which is larger, and the second will be located on the second floor in the AV room. Little background on a UPS, they provide, really they have two functions. The first being they provide stable power to, to sensitive IT equipment. In case power is unstable, the UPS will continue to provide adequate current to the equipment. And the second most important is that a UPS provides battery backup power in the event of a power outage to the equipment. So it has to be sized properly to sustain equipment in the event there is a power outage. You know, when we're looking at the courthouse specifically, UPS is a critical piece of equipment for this location. In the event there is a power outage, we have to sustain all of our data centers long enough to allow customers to exit the facility and give IT staff long enough to shut down the equipment. Because we have cameras, all of the access control will be running off that. So we really have to have that online. We've sized the UPSs to sustain about 30 to 40 minutes of backup power. We feel that should be enough time for everyone to exit and then shut down the equipment. There is no generator on the building. That's why we've really sized it at that. This was budgeted in the IT budget for the courthouse this year, and it was all part of the network infrastructure that was presented to everyone in the previous meeting. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Baskett for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion. As Mr. Baskett mentioned, these are all included in the budget numbers that we've already approved for the renovation of the courthouse.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
I move to approve the purchase of two Eaton un interruptible power supply products with the Ramtech in the amount of $49,737.38 plus applicable sales tax.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Item 8.7 is approve the purchase of Dell network switches with Dell Technologies utilizing an Arizona cooperative contract. Mr. Baskett?
All right, you got another courthouse one for you. For this item, we are requesting approval to purchase 13 switches for the, for the courthouse. Switches are basically their routers. They route traffic and they connect all the devices on the network. In the court specifically, we're looking at about 600 devices that are going to be installed in the courts. And those are going to run across four different networks. There's going to be, basically the network consists of an AOC network, which is administrative of the courts. That's controlled by the state. The state courts run that. We have to supply the equipment for it, but yet they're going, they're responsible for that network. We're going to have the city network there, running all the lake habits, through all the data files and internet and all of our local applications. We're going to have a security network that runs all the access controls, the cameras. And then you have also the AV network that runs the AV in every, every courtroom and in the multipurpose room upstairs. So there's, there's a lot of infrastructure going in and these switches are required to, to route all the traffic. If you'd like any more information, I'd be happy to provide it. And this was another item that was included in the previous infrastructure.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Baskett? For members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase with Dell Technologies for Dell network switches utilizing Arizona's cooperative contract in the amount of $99,274.54.
Okay. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Item 8.8 is approve the cooperative purchase of three police administration replacement vehicles with Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford. Chief Sterling?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm asking for approval this evening for the purchase of three administration replacement vehicles through Santan Ford. And that's with a cooperative purchase agreement utilizing the Arizona State Contract. These three vehicles will allow us to remove three older model vehicles from the fleet that have already been identified as exceeding vehicle maintenance as a replacement criteria. Ultimately, sufficient appropriation is already in the budget, in the current budget, utilizing Proposition 207 funding. With the use of Prop 207 funding, this will allow the replacement of these three vehicles, relieving the general fund from any financial obligation. So that's why this evening I'm asking for approval of the cooperative purchase through Santan Ford in the amount of $189,292.40. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Do any members of the council have any questions for Chief Sterling? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
New guy's already asking for stuff. Told you this would happen. I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the cooperative purchase of three police administration replacement vehicles with Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, in the amount of $189,292.40.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item is item 8.9 is approve a cooperative purchase of four 2023 Ford F-250 regular cab four-by-twos with Santan Auto Partners, Santan Ford. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Yes, we have four pickups for Parks and Rec. We're looking at replacing three 2005 and one 2007. Both or all are pushing 40 points, if not sitting at 40 points. So I'm asking your permission through a cooperative purchase with Santan from the state bid procurement office to move forward with purchasing four two-by-four pickup trucks, 20, 23 F-250s for a purchase price of $45,258.63 each for a total of $181,3452.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Young?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Can you tell me what these vehicles are used for? Because I understand the replacement and is, and I see the age of them, but they don't have a lot of miles on them. Can you tell me what they're used for?
The Parks and Rec vehicles are used around the parks for either towing or hauling equipment and making repairs around our parks, as well as up through the city at the splash pad and the various parks through the city. The 2005s, we are unable to get parts for most of them at this current time. So we're running out of the ability to find parts. We can find some on eBay, but that gets pretty timely when you're looking for that. It's time to do it. We used to be at a 28-point system through the APWA. A few years back, you guys moved it 32 points. And these vehicles are now sitting at nearly 40 points. And they're going to continue to cost us money in, in repairs. And if we can't find parts, then they're going to, the downtime's going to be even greater.
One more question, and these four vehicles, what are we doing with them? Are we selling them?
Like that?
The old vehicles, what are we doing with them?
They would be, they'd go to auction.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for members of the council? Um, Mr. Young, could you explain the point system just real briefly for those watching at home, what, what that means?
Yes, our point system involves a few items. One is age, one is the amount of repairs compared to the purchase price, two is mileage, idle hours. And we put all that together, and that's how we come up with our points.
Excellent. Yes, so for example, one of the vehicles we're replacing, or considering to replace based on this item, we've spent $21,000 already in just repair costs over, over its life. They all have over 100,000, near 100,000 miles on them. All right, would anyone, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coke?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of four 2023 Ford F-250 regular cab four-by-twos with Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, in the amount of $181,345.52.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item 8.10 is award bid for the purchase and installation of a turnkey ply-movement diesel exhaust extraction system for all six city fire stations. Chief Palaus?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you is a grant-funded project that we received a grant in August from the Assistance to Firefighter Grant to purchase and install a diesel exhaust system. We were awarded the grant. We went out for invitation to bid. Bid openings were November 30th, 2022 for a turnkey exhaust system. There were two bidders that met the requirements, and this included the electrical work associated with the project. The lowest bid was 232,490. thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight, uh, dollars and forty-four cents from Barnes Electric LLC, uh, and they are going to install the prime event system. And then the highest bid was two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents from Ross Enterprise Inc., um, known as, uh, Magna Grip. Uh, during the imitation a bid, we did have a protest. Uh, so this is, uh, the protest, we followed the procedures, um, and the protest was based on the design of the system. Uh, the imitation a bid was a performance, so it, uh, was not based on a design. We went through the, the proper process through the administrative director. We looked at their rationale, um, before we came to council. We deemed that, uh, Barnes Electric, uh, provided sufficient documentation in regards to what was being protested. Again, uh, Magna Grip was protesting the design of the system instead of this, the performance of a installing and purchased of, in a capturing system. So staff is recommending that, uh, the bid be awarded to Barnes Electric LLC, Prime Event System as the lowest bidder, uh, meeting all specification for two hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight and forty-four cents. The motion we're also is accepting, uh, denial of the, uh, protest from, uh, Magna Grip. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah. So the, uh, protest is all outlined in our procurement code. So our procurement code is very clear on how we purchase things. Uh, when it goes through uh, the bid process, um, somebody can make a, a protest, uh, that provided a bid, uh, based on, uh, different specs we used or, or what it might be this time it was on design. Uh, the processes that, uh, the department director and administrative services director, some Ms. Olson, go through, uh, the steps to, um, uh, review the protest to see if it's valid or not. And in this case, it's not. So that's why it, it looks just a little different. We wanted to have a public record showing that we're, that we're denying the protest and then award the bid. Again, uh, the chief, uh, has this grant funded, so this is, uh, not going to be any cost to the general fund. Um, so with that, are there any questions for Chief Plafis? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I do like about the system that you've chosen, Chief, and appreciate all your diligence is the fact that, um, our sister fire stations, um, through Bullhead City and Kingman use this exact same system. So if you were to have to request mutually and bring those apparatus pieces down here, or borrow an apparatus from over there, you could plug it right into this system, uh, and not be putting these diesel exhaust, exhaust beams into, uh, our fire station. I read the, the, um, complaints as well, and, and it just didn't hold water for me as well. So, um, but thank you for, for your due diligence and, and looking at, at both of these and still, uh, responding to their, uh, their protest.
Are there any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to deny in whole the protest submitted by Rosman Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Magna Grip, and award the bid for the purchase and installation, including electrical of turnkey ply-movement diesel exhaust extraction, extraction system for all six city fire stations to Barnes Electric LLC in the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents, and authorize the city manager to execute the services contract. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Our final public hearing this evening is item eight point one-one, award bid for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three hot mix asphalt repairs and concrete valve collars in various locations to Pioneer Earth Movers. Mr. Young?
Yes, again, good evening.
Actually, Mr. Young, before you begin.
Mayor, I will need to recuse.
Okay. Excellent. So Councilmember Campbell is, uh, recusing herself from this item. Mr. Young?
Uh, yes, we came up with, uh, seven projects, uh, five of them being, uh, repairs either from water breaks or, uh, failed patches, uh, in, in the past, and two of them being parking lots, uh, for a grand total of two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, we did put it out to bid, uh, the lowest being Pioneer at, at the two thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred dollars, and the highest being three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Um, so I ask your permission to move forward with this and, uh, get these rough roads repaired a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. So what, uh, we do is when we have like a water, a water break or something along those lines, we'll do a repair, but then we'll save up projects so that we can get, uh, better pricing to go back and re, uh, take the, the patch work out and then actually repair the road in a correct way. Uh, some of the areas, if you drive on industrial, um, you'll, you'll find that areas in, in a bad spot. Uh, same with some areas on, uh, on Jamaica, Park Avenue. So there, Park's actually a, a parking lot, but, uh, there's just different areas in town where we've had large breaks, uh, that this would, would take care of. It doesn't include Lake Havasu Avenue, but we already, that's right.
No, this is separate, separate contract.
Yes. All right. Uh, any questions, comments from members of the council before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Do any of these repairs, are they, any of these from the vendors that cut into the asphalt? Are we fixing any of their repairs or is this?
No, these are all, these are all repairs either done from our water main breaks or, like I said, patches that have failed in the past, or, uh, such as Jamaica and, um, Timowave. Uh, we just had an issue with, uh, that corner there, and we, we've tried and tried and tried. So it's time to pull the old asphalt out and get new in.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to award the bid for the fiscal year twenty-two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three hot mix asphalt repairs and concrete valve collars to various locations to Pioneer Earth Movers in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. I think Ms. Williams will, will take it, recuse it for you. Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one council member recusal.
Thank you. All right. Item nine is current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, we got a lot of fun stuff happening at the PED. Um, the housing study is finally complete, and that was delivered to all of you in the, uh, Mr. Knutson's go-to-the-order file. Um, a lot of good stuff in there, and I'm really kind of hoping they bring it to council and do a presentation, either, whether it be the study or, or the PED, but I look forward to seeing that here. Um, they continue to reach out to developers and court people to look at, uh, affordable housing projects, like, you know, Vitek and, and the, the like. Um, and then Nomadec is going to be doing, um, opening on February seventeenth is kind of their projected soft opening date. Everybody that is already in F-106, you know, will be sliding over there, kind of be the move-in, and, uh, they hope to iron out all the kinks before they start bringing in, uh, people from, you know, they already have a list going of potential, uh, suitors and, and they'll start really ramping up advertising and stuff like that. But, and I believe we're all going to be invited to join kind of an open house and see what's all going down, down there. But, uh, February seventeenth, pretty exciting.
Excellent. All right. Are there any other council committee reports? All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is our future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-two at eight-thirty in the morning. That's our planning session. Uh, Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six PM, we'll have a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three at six PM, we will also, um, have a regular meeting. Are there any, uh, future discussion items?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lynn?
Um, yes, I would like to maybe discuss the current community resource coalition in making it into a permanently Cavasu board, similar to the Parks and Rec Board or the Airport Advisory Board.
All right. We, uh, have a motion, or we have a suggestion from Councilmember Lynn for a future agenda item. We do have a second on that. Um, Mr. Knutson or Ms. Gary, do you have any questions or is that enough information for you?
I think that's enough. I mean, we would just bring back basically what you just said to a meeting and council can decide and give direction.
All right. Very good.
Unless there's someone else we can bring. I don't know what else to bring.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic. All right. Um, item twelve, uh, motion to adjourn? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time. We are adjourned.